If you folks will just bear with us, we're waiting on a couple of other members to arrive. So we'll have a quorum. Thank you.
Finding any more snakes?
Good, how about you, sir?
You finding any more snakes? Turtles? Guys have like an ashry over there. That's no fun. That's no fun.
I'm just one of those where the...
I'm in trouble with my wife every day, so...
Just sanitized. I can't find it.
It's getting better. We're out. We walk every night. We out, we go out and we take a walk around the neighborhood each night. And she has, she had a operation back in January on her foot. Still swollen every day. It's on the label.
That's great.
She's trying to walk, so she's up to about a mile.
And I know we buy the farm because we just cleaned out a building yesterday.
I had an old, that's not old, that's a, it's a walking stick. It's like a shoveling. I gave her that to use, so she's got big steps. Going down the hill, out the road and stuff. She's pushing. She likes to energize the body, she just doesn't stop.
No, don't do that. Don't be nice to me, nobody else.
I don't know, but keep sorry, I'll kill me.
But no, we, we buy the N nine fives to go in green beans. Those are really, really good. And I can't find them at the end.
And the doctor told her that it's probably going to be swollen for like about a year. She did, she, she tore the leg, you know, or she tore the tendon in her ankle. And then she was, she was at, on the sidewalk.
When you said one more time, it was really upsetting.
And her foot caught the edge of the curb. It didn't matter that. So she, she tore that. She didn't realize that she broke bones in her foot, too. They didn't tell us that from the beginning. We went to the doctor like about three, about three times. And they finally said, oh, maybe. Because he kept saying, bones are feeling really good. And bones are feeling, it's like, oh, yeah.
Coastal Carolina came in all the time.
She didn't know that.
And so he still ran a business.
You would take it, you know, I mean, you put a heart cast on it.
He runs fifteen trucks, he delivers into about twenty county areas.
They went back to San Diego, took the heart cast off, and then she was in, she was in a boot for a while.
Vanos came in on his lot.
Now she has nothing. Now, we use the tens machine at night on a calf. Because a calf gets so tight. That helps. And then she just got sucked. Which is really strange, because it's similar to the tens, but it's on your foot. You have to dip the water first before you put it on. You think, okay, water and electricity?
This is just a little old, little aside place.
I hope so.
This is appropriate.
Hey, Lee. Make sure, hey, when you guys speak, make sure you're speaking to the microphone. So transmit over there. Thanks.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. I mean, we have, most of, most of all the flowers were in, like, early this year. Because we're both home. Couldn't go anywhere.
I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Union County Planning Board for June 2nd, 2020. At this time, I'd ask you to stand for a moment of reflection. And I've asked Patrick Harrison to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little bit of a different type of meeting because of the pandemic that's going on. So this is the first one that we've had in about two months. So please bear with us tonight. There'll be some breaks. There'll be time to change you guys out, bring the next group in, et cetera. So we'll move as fast as we can, but still have a good, sound meeting with good, sound input and good, sound judgment. One thing I would like to ask is that when we ask for public comments, that you respect each other. You respect the applicant, and that you respect this board. Do not want any voice overrun or anything like that. If you do, we'll ask you to leave. And it's that plain and simple. In today's place, as you see things going on, we just don't want to have that get out of hand here in Union County. The people here are phenomenal people. So I ask your support as the chair of this or, of this board here. First thing I'd like to address the board with is that we need to ask Robert, nomination for Robert to be a voting member tonight. Do we have a motion? Patrick? Okay. Motion's been made by Patrick. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Louis. All those in favor, raise your right hand. You're voting members, sir. Thank you very much. You have in front of you the agenda. Would ask you to look at it and make any recommendations for additions or deletions, or any concerns that you've got. Do we have a motion to accept or deny?
Um, probably we need to remove item five.
Remove item five? Okay, thank you. Item five's been removed. Now do we have a motion to accept with the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Louis, do we have a second? Robert? Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is CZ 2020-001, Secure Turf. We've been asked to approve or deny the request. And we'd like to ask Lee to come forward to discuss and tell us about it. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning board. So this is case CZ 2020-001. The working title is Secure Turf. This is a request to amend the zoning map of Union County by rezoning a parcel of land from RA 200 Conditional, which is a residential agricultural 200,000 square foot minimum lot size, conditional district to light industrial conditional district. The applicant requests the rezoning in order to continue operating a landscaping business and to operate an organic materials recycling facility on a portion of the property. Types of daily operations would include incineration, grinding, screening, processing of organic materials. This is a conditional district request. So the rezoning will bound by the conceptual plan and all the conditions. The conceptual plan says the general layout of the existing and proposed building locations, which are here. The driveway entrance, environmental features such as the floodplain, et cetera. Specific uses allowed would include the reclamation landfill, the organic materials recycling facility, and a landscaping company. These are some general pictures of the area. This is located along Indian Trail Fairview Road, specifically 8414. If you're familiar, if you look down at the picture on your top left, you may be able to see a stop sign just right above my cursor. That's Ridge Road. So that's kind of that general area. There's a substation just a little bit further past. So kind of a general view down Indian Trail Fairview Road toward Ridge. The top right, that's the driveway going into the existing facility. Picture on the bottom left, again, that's Indian Trail Fairview Road looking the other way toward the town of Fairview, which is not too far down the road from this site. And then the bottom right picture is from the site looking directly across the street. So that's a fairly big field over there. Again, I mentioned that this was fairly close to the town of Fairview. So you can see, this is the, this is the site. Again, Ridge Road, Indian Trail Fairview, and then that leads into Fairview, just on the other side of Lawyer's Road. If you were to go a little bit further to the west, down Indian Trail Fairview, you would run into Rocky River and eventually into the, the town of Indian Trail. As you can see from this map, this area is pretty sparsely developed. There's not, not a lot out here, especially farms. Fairly low density residential uses. You can see there's some chicken houses. I don't think these are used right now, but there's some chicken houses right here at the corner of Ridge and Indian Trail Fairview. If you were to zoom out a little bit further, a little bit to the southwest, you have Porter, the Porter Ridge cluster of schools. So you have the elementary, middle, and high school, a little bit further down here. And then again, a little bit further to the west, you have the town of Indian Trail. And that's the Poplin Road area where you have Montero Village and Annandale and a lot of that development. As far as environmental features, you do see a fairly large floodplain on the property. So this is, I believe this is Cricket Creek. So it's a fairly large floodplain on that property. So in talking with the applicant, we've, you know, said, you know, listen, you can't, you can't be in that floodplain. That's, that's a no-no, you've got to be out of it. There's no other major environmental features on the map, as you can see. I mean, you have a couple of other non-environmental features, such as there, there's a, a high tension power line that goes through the property. But the floodplain is the major. The majority of the surrounding area, including this property, are, are served by wells and septic systems. There is some water in the area, so that's not to say that, that every single property is well and septic. But there's a mix of well and septic, well and water. And then further you go west, you get into some, some areas that are served by sewer. But this primary area is either well and septic or county water and septic. The property is currently, as the state had before, is on RA 200 Conditional. It's been zoned RA 200 Conditional since 2017. At that, back in 2017, the Board of Commissioners rezoned this property from RA 40 to its current zoning to allow for the operation of a landscaping company. Prior to that rezoning, the property's owned RA 40 since the county established zoning in the late 1970s. We have a traffic count right in front of 2,000 vehicle trips per day. And the other major feature in this area, there's a funded roundabout project at Lawyer's and Indian Trail Fairview Road. I think some of my slides went away. This is in the agricultural, on the edge of the agricultural and mixed residential area of the comprehensive plan. Mixed residential areas do anticipate some higher residential densities and different housing types, the closer you are to commercial nodes. The agricultural areas anticipate areas that are to remain rural residential and agricultural in nature. And as far as staff comments go, this rezoning request, since it is in the mixed residential and the agricultural areas, is not consistent with the Union County Comprehensive Plan. The post-use would be too intensive for the predominant rural and agricultural land use patterns in the area. Does any board members have any questions for me?
Any questions for Lee from the board? Good. Thanks, Lee.
You said that it was, it was rezoned in 2017?
Yes, sir.
From RA 40 to?
RA 200 Conditional?
Yeah, that was done by the, it wasn't done by the planning board, it was done by the commissioners?
It, it came to the planning board first for a recommendation, and then the, the Board of Commissioners ultimately approved that rezoning request.
And that was for what originally?
A landscaping business.
So why, why rezone it to LA then?
So if you'll see kind of this site plan, this is their, sort of their current operation, if you will. They have a, an office where they kind of do design for landscape installations. They have a fairly large office right there. They have an area kind of behind the office where their trucks come in and out. And then as part of that rezoning request, they were approved to have a, up to one acre in size reclamation landfill, which is basically shrubs and limbs and stuff like that, that you come in and you can dump and cover it up. We, we did have a violation issued at this, at this site. There were some, I believe it's called a curtain burner. They started bringing in a lot, actually not, instead of the applicant, the operator bringing in, there were some outside agencies, outside contractors bringing loads in and dumping them. And then the curtain burner was, was burning some of the, some of the debris that, that was brought into the site. So when, when we found out about it, Jim issued them a, Jim King, Arizona Administrator, issued them a violation notice to, to stop. And that's kind of what brought about this, this rezoning application. The applicant wants to continue to operate it in that regard.
Is currently a one acre dump allowed?
Under the current, under the current zoning, yes. That was part of the rezoning application of not to exceed one acre reclamation landfill.
All right. Is that a pit dug, or is that a burning site? Or is that a burial site?
It'd be a burial site. You see, you could dig a pit and bury it and cover it back up if you wanted to.
But that was what it was originally designed for?
Yes, sir.
Not a burning pit?
No, sir.
But they're going to add an incinerator to it?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what, part of the request is for that.
Where's that going to go?
It will be back in this area where the existing, or where the reclamation landfill was proposed.
That's, that's, that's not in the floodplain?
No. It, it's pretty close, but we, we did look up, look at some aerial photographs during the process for issuing the violation notice, and we, we did confirm that, that, that it was out of the floodplain. The best we could tell. I mean, that was looking at aerial photographs overlaid on top of where the current uses were taking place. And they were pretty recent aerials. So we were able to, I think, pretty much say that they were not in the floodplain. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Lee, you talk about having an incinerator here. Right close to the town of Fairview, is there any controls over what comes out of the exhaust and what it smells like?
Yes, sir. There is a state permit that you're required to get. It's a, it's an air quality permit. And I believe they do have an air quality permit. The, the curtain burner's on site. That, that was part of the, part of the violation, was the curtain burner was on site. And that's actually how we found out about it. There was a lot of complaints about smoke. But there is an air quality permit in place from state air quality for that.
How often does that get checked?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. They're, they're located in Mooresville, so they don't have a local office here in Monroe. And my understanding, just from talking to them, is that they'll come down if there's a complaint.
Do you have any comments for Lee? Good. Lee, thank you.
You're welcome. And the applicant is here. I believe he wants to make a, a presentation, and then you have the list of folks that signed up.
The applicant will come forward. Please speak in to the microphone, just if you need it, any of the people that are speaking tonight. State your name and state your address, please, for the record. Okay? Thank you.
I've got printouts of the presentation. Would you guys like hard copies, or do you just want to see it on your screens? Okay.
All right, just making sure.
Thank you, Lee, for that. Thank you, planning board members. So what I am seeking permission, approval to do is to operate what is...
Excuse me. Could you just state your name, please?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. My name is Ryan Ray.
Thank you.
And my address is 8414 Indian Trail Fairview Road. So I, I live on the property that we are looking to perform this work on and have this, continue this type of business on. From the outside, what we are, are looking to do will look like a stump dump. But, but what we are wanting to do is repurpose as much of the material that comes into the property as possible. When folks or contractors are clearing lots and they're not burning it on, on their particular lot, they're going to take it to a landfill or a stump dump. We want to bring that material in. If we can repurpose any of the logs for timber, if we can repurpose any of the other biomass for mulch, that sort of thing. If we can incinerate it and make biochar with it, we want to do that. So I'll try to bounce through a few of these slides right quick, but let's see. So again, just to desire to rezone the property for organic material recycling. Again, the incineration with the, either a trench burner or a curtain burner type piece of equipment. Grinding for mulch creation. Screening soils that come in to make fill soils or topsoil or garden soil. And if any concrete or brick materials come in, we'd like to have the ability to, to crush or grind that to make gravel aggregate recycled base material. So again, we're taking soils, rock, brick, concrete. Again, that's a small, would be a small part of it. But again, it's just, our goal is to reduce the accumulation of this type of material in any other landfill or stump dump. We don't have room on the property to pile it up and have a mountain, as you can see on those other slides that Lee showed you. So we can't pile it up forever, and we don't have a, a giant ditch or a canyon to push it into. So we want to process it and get it back out. So that would be our goal. So we will have a smaller footprint than a typical landfill or stump dump type facility. So again, it just kind of goes over the, the items that we're, that we're looking to, to perform. I, I showed a few, I just tried to make a few screenshots of where we're located. Geographically, you guys may have already understood that from what Lee was talking about as far as Rocky River and Ridge Road. That's a little close up. And again, that's where we are. But, but our goal is to take material like this and, and clear material, and if there's usable product in there, pull it out and get, you know, sell it to sawmills or reuse it, instead of either burying it or just getting rid of it. Again, so here's some of the concrete and, and recycled material, masonry material. Again, we're just wanting to make a concrete or a, a aggregate base, recycled base material. And then soils, we would blend and screen soils to make other blends that are, again, marketable. One of the reasons that we, I feel like that we help serve the market is just our geographic location. Union County doesn't have many, many of these type facilities. They've got Griffin Farms, which is permitted, and they've got Union County landfill. As far as that, the other stump dumps or recycling facilities are either Mecklenburg County or Cabarrus County. So we're not aware of other permitted facilities around. We feel like we're in a good spot geographically for the growth of, of the county. Again, when guys, when contractors put this material in a dump truck and drive it across county roads and state roads, if they can be closer to a facility to, to drop that material, that's less time that that material is driving up and down the highways. So that's just kind of a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
About how many truckloads do you receive a day on, on a daily basis?
How many would we anticipate? It could be anywhere from 15 to 50. Yes, sir.
How many acres is going to be incorporated in this? Are we, is this an unlimited amount of acres we're given, or just everything that's out of the floodplain? Or what's going to be, what's going to be the stump?
It would be that, I should have put that slide in there that Lee had that showed you our, our proposed spot. But it was about 15 acres, but a good bit of that was in the floodplain. So again, we're not, we can't use the floodplain as, as a, as a location for these materials. So it would be outside of the floodplain. And that just gives us three or four acres of room. Again, we don't have room for a big footprint for a facility, so that's why we want to process it and, and keep it, keep it moving. We can't pile it up or bury it. We don't want to bury it.
And you'd be burning 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
No, sir. Our, our permit with the state only allows us to burn from eight o'clock till six o'clock during daylight hours. So that's, it's, the permit allows us seven days a week, but it's only during those hours, eight to six, that we're allowed to burn. We have to shut down the machine at four o'clock so that by six o'clock, it's, it's done, it's burning for the day. So no, sir, it's not a, not a 24-hour operation.
What about the breaking of the rock?
Again, that, that is a small part of it, and that would be something that, again, just a daylight hours type of event. We anticipate the amount of that type of material to be 10% or 20% of what we're getting, or what we would get as far as total truckloads. So it's a, it's a much smaller percentage. So I, I do not anticipate running a, any type of crusher for an extended period of time. We might run it one or two days a, a week, or one or two days a month, depending on the amount of material coming in. We, we do care about our neighbors around us. I know that the school is two miles down the road. I don't want to create a nuisance noise. I live on the property. So I mean, I could, you can hit a golf ball from my back doorstep to where we're going to operate this type of facility. And I have three small children that go to the Porter Ridge School. So I don't want to raise them in a, in a dump or sanitary landfill environment, so there's no solid waste, of course. But I don't want to noisy them. But I don't want a noisy environment or a smoky environment, anything like that. We do live there, so, and we love it there, so.
Do you go purchase a tub grinder?
Potentially, potentially, yes, sir. Some sort, either a tub grinder or a horizontal grinder would be an option, but we haven't explored that.
Will you bring a contractor in to run a tub grinder for you? Because obviously, if you're going to do what you're planning on this, there's going to have to be a tub grinder on the facility.
If we can't use the incineration type equipment, we would have to get some grinding equipment. I don't, that doesn't seem like a positive outcome for me. I'm just not trying to make mulch. There's enough contractors in the county that make that type of material that I don't have a desire to make a bunch of that material. Again, I don't have the room to store it. I'm not going to winrow it so it doesn't catch on fire. I just, I'm not looking to get into composting, that sort of thing. If we can incinerate it to make carbon-based materials that we can mix into soils, we can spread over agricultural fields, we can mix into topsoils and garden soils, that kind of thing. That would be my desired approach to handling that material.
In other words, you're going to sell the ash?
Yes, sir. That, the, when we take that material and we, at the end of the day, when we clean the pit out, it's ash and char, like small pieces of charcoal, except without the chemical additives. It's just organic materials. Because that's what is going into the pit, is just organic materials. Again, it's not construction and demolition debris. It's not anything solid waste. It's just organic materials, so.
Pure trust in soul, because there's so many contractors out there. When they throw a tandem dump truck up, you may save rocks, you may save concrete, but there's a lot of junk in it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We've seen that. And we call them and they have to come back and get it or they have to pay our guys to pick it out. So we, again, I live there. I don't want that stuff going into the soil. And I don't want my kids saying that they grew up on a landfill. We love this piece of property that we're on. We love our neighborhood, the area. I want to be there until I die. So again, I don't want to have a buildup of any sort of trash or environmental issues at all.
Was that David Per Land?
Yes, sir.
This dumping, is this only for contractors? Homeowners can bring their stuff too, or?
Yes, sir. Homeowners could bring theirs as well. Yes, sir.
How loud is that grinder for like the concrete?
That's a good question. I don't know. I don't own a grinder. We've just, we've thought about crushing that material. Because we go through a tremendous amount of gravel each year. We could use a hundred loads a year and it seems to disappear as soon as we spread it. So, but I can get you the, you know, the noise.
I'm just thinking, the school being down the road, you know, maybe you want to talk to the school about, you know, when you can run it and stuff.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't interfere with, you know, the school.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
This land that you're talking about, the change here, did you own that in 2017?
Yes, sir.
How come you didn't do it all in?
To be honest, I was very concerned about getting the business, being able to run the business out of that, out of that spot. I wanted to make sure that I could operate my landscape business there from the property. I had no idea that the ability to have a stump dumper, have the recycling options would be as great as they are.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It appears that this is a recycling business.
Yes, sir.
Could I assume that you feel like you can take all of this waste matter and recycle it and sell it and make a profit?
Yes, sir.
Would part of that profit be involved in having a cost of acquisition? Like if I wanted to bring some debris over, would I have to pay you to take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just like any other, just like Griffin Farms or the Union County landfill, contractors paid by weight or by ton, that sort of thing.
And what would be the disposition of any matter that you were not able to recycle? Would you dispose of it off the property? Or would you sack it in the corner somewhere as it built up?
Like organic material that we weren't able?
Like anything. Anything that could not be processed would be debris. And what would you do with debris that is not processable and resalable? It would eventually build up. How would you dispose of it?
Yes, sir. Again, if it's a solid waste type byproduct, again, if it's trash or something like that, that would be put in the dumpster, put in a roll-off container and removed. We would have some as a percentage of everything. I'm sure there would be a percent of material that would build up, but we would haul that material away.
So also, all non-recyclable, all non-recyclable waste will be removed from the premises to, I guess, I guess, a dump site, I imagine, a landfill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that would all be based on the Department of Environment and National Resources, DEQ, Dean, their guidelines. So they would, they, we've seen those folks and gotten to know them quite well. So again, we have to abide by them.
I would think most of them would be based upon, if nobody would buy it from you, you got to get rid of it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you're surrounded by, looks like, single-family residential, mixed residential floor. I guess it's a fair assumption, the foreseeable future, based on the land use plan. Do you have any kind of buffers around, especially the area of the site where you're going to have incineration or grinding activities that would not only screen for sound, but any kind of visual? I know a lot of people don't want to look out their back porch and see heavy equipment.
Sure, sure. We are in the process and currently we've got large earthen berms that we're building around the property. Again, from the landscape background, I like to build berms and then plant trees and shrubs and grass and that sort of thing on them. So again, being, living on the site and being a fan of the neighborhood, I don't want to create an eyesore for my neighbors. So my goal is that every operation on the property will be screened from view. Again, not that we're hiding anything. We invite anybody to come on site anytime, anytime they'd like and see what we're doing. But again, we don't want it to be an eyesore for the neighborhood. That's the last thing, that's the last thing that we want.
Approximately, how tall and how wide would these berms be?
I mean, I think the minimum right now is probably fifteen feet tall and, I don't know, thirty feet wide.
Do you have any equipment taller than that?
We do, yes, sir.
How tall would the tallest piece of equipment be?
I mean, I guess it just depends on how you use that equipment. But I don't know. I don't know the right answer to that. I mean, you know, you could extend an excavator boom as high as, you know...
As far as, I guess, grinding and incineration equipment?
I mean, those things are hauled down to the interstate, so they can't be too much taller, about thirteen feet. So again, we would have berms and vegetation that would more than cover any of that type of equipment that would be on the site in a semi-permanent status. Again, you know, those things are movable either on tracks or with a road tractor. But again, it wouldn't be visible from the street. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Now, I understand you, a while ago, you said you get anywhere from fifteen to fifty truckloads a day?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All different size trucks. Since 2017, do you know of any trucks that have been responsible for accidents on that road?
Not that I'm aware of. I know there have been a few truck accidents on Indian Trail Fairview and around us. But as far as them, you know, coming, you know, saying that they were coming to our site and anything like that, I don't have those details for you. We certainly encourage the drivers to have legal loads, have all their material covered, tarp. The DOT, state troopers have been out and have worn a bunch of the guys out for various reasons, and I encourage that.
Bjorn, do you know how many trucks, truck wrecks, there's been out on that highway?
I can't answer that question. It depends on the location and, you know, what kind of time period you're looking at. But the fact that there's the intersection project just to the east, that was a safety-driven project.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for Mr. Roy?
I do, one more.
Yes, sir.
Lee wants you to...
I wanted to address the comment about screening or the question about screening a little bit. There is a minimum required screening, which if the rezoning was approved by, ultimately by the Board of Commissioners during a site plan review, it requires an S-two screen, which is basically six-foot opaque screen and then large trees planted, I think forty feet, forty feet on the center. So that's a, that's a minimum requirement that would have to be met on the property. I just wanted you to, just wanted you to...
One more question for you?
Yes, sir.
You said you were going to, when people come in, you're going to charge them to drop off their stuff?
Yes, sir.
That's homeowners, too?
Yes, sir.
And how would you, how would you go about that?
It would just be by the size of the vehicle, if they have a trailer or a pickup truck, you know, how many axles the vehicle has, that sort of thing. Yes, sir.
And what about, is it just Union County residents only?
No, sir. It's whoever's in the area, whoever comes out to the facility. Yes, sir. There's, I mean, I guess there's a chance we could get Mecklenburg County folks, but there's some more facilities just over the Mecklenburg County line that may be closer to them. Again, we, it's got to be a convenience thing. It doesn't, if we're not convenient, it doesn't matter.
Well, I go, I go to Foxhole. Foxhole isn't that far from my house.
Yes, sir.
And it's sixty dollars a year. And that's kitchen waste, everything. And then if I want to bring in garden stuff, that's eight dollars a truckload. Doesn't, doesn't matter what size my truck is.
Got you. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Roy?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, I'm not familiar with the incinerators that you speak of.
Yes, sir.
But my question is, is there going to be a smoke stack? And how high is that going to be?
The air curtain burners that blow, they blow a curtain of air into the ground, so there is no smoke stack.
Okay.
Like you would see on an industrial building.
Okay.
There's no stack.
A natural gas burner on the side?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Natural gas burner?
It's just a diesel-powered engine that just runs a fan and just blows air. That's all it's doing. It's over-oxygenating a pit in the ground, just like when you try to start firing your buck stove and you take one of those old-timey huffers, you know, and kind of blow into it. It's just over-oxygenating. There's no other chemicals. There's no natural gas or diesel or gasoline put into it. It's just oxygen, straight air. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
At this time, we'll call speakers who signed in. When you come up, again, state your name, your address. Please speak clearly. And your time limit is three minutes, okay? Three minutes. First, I'd like to call Roger Drake.
I'm Roger Drake. I live at eleven oh three Lawyers Road West. I was at the meeting, let me start. I was at the meeting when the first rezoning happened. And he told me, I asked him plainly, would there be dump trucks running in and out of this place? He said, no, sir. My company used only. And what he told me was, if I go to your house and take your old shrubs up, I need a place to put them. I said, so you ain't going to have a volume of tractor-trailers, dump trucks? I've set my yard and counted twenty-five, thirty dump trucks. McGee Brothers, everybody hauling trash. A lot comes out of Charlotte. You sit in my driveway and watch it. He was in the burning. You need to ask the Unaville Fire Department or Fairview, and I don't remember which one, but they've been running out there numerous times. People ride by to see the big flames going on. They dial nine-one-one, forest fire. Well, that's not, that wasn't true. He was burning trash. One, two, three o'clock in the morning, you hear the track hoe. When you open a bucket up on a track hoe and a bucket rattles, you hear it at two, three o'clock in the morning, every night. But lately, that's not been happening because he quit burning. So I'm a trucker of a trade. That's what I do for a living. I know about tractor-trailers. You sit in my yard, you can count twenty-five, thirty dump trucks. And you sit there hours' time, you count a bunch. He doubled his prices here lately to make everybody stay away. Okay? Average loads, fifty bucks a load for a tandem load, a hundred and nine dollars. I believe that's right. Okay? If you charge in double, you won't come. Everybody's looking to save a buck. That's just truth of the matter. Am I right, Everett? That's truth of the matter. If he gets this passed, there'll be no stopping him. I've been in a rock quarry where the crushers running, crushing concrete. Everybody's wearing earmuffs. You can't stand to be around in the dust. Long ways, long ways. Martin Marietta, got water jets running, pumping water on top of it while they're crushing. Still dust going across the street on a man's house. He calls EPA on them all the time. Okay? When he was burning, my pickup in my yard would have ash on it the next morning. I live there. That's my thirteen-year-old grandson sitting right there. At my death, the property goes to him. I don't want no more incinerators or nothing. No. And you agree? I mean, you know. Like I said before, and I made him mad at the last meeting, you give him an inch and he'll take a mile.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day. Jerry Smith. State your name, address.
My name is Jerry Smith. I live at four oh five Simpson Road, which is about three-quarters of a mile from where Secure Turf is operating this facility. I've been, I've been operating a stump dump or landfill, whatever you want to call it, since nineteen eighty-eight in this about three-fourths of a mile from him. As far as I know, I've had no complaints in, what, twenty-five years. Before I received my permits, I spent two years working to be sure that everything was correct. I had to put in sediment basements, basins, filter systems and all that. So any water that runs off of my place is filtered before it ever goes back into the creek. And plus, I had to be three-quarters, I forget how many feet, but it, a pretty good ways from the creek. He's operating in a land, in a flood zone, which I know has been flooded several times since he's been in operation. Because I've seen his backhoe's completely underwater. But the water problem is not the greatest. My greatest problem with him is that burning, which he's had huge fires. I know he's supposed to burn it in those pits, but he has such a volume coming in that those pits are not sufficient or whatever he's burning it in. You can't see in there because he's got everything hidden. But I lost my train of thought, I didn't have anything prepared. But anyway, he's been burning. And every morning I wake up, when he was burning, every morning I had to smell air pollution. I know it's air pollution because I could smell it. And in this day and age, when we're so worried about air pollution and air quality, I don't see how you can put a facility like this in the middle of a residential area. Plus, I feel like it's going to, a zoning like this is going to lower all the property values in the area because nobody's going to want to buy or live near a place where there's a continuous fire going. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. I hope I get this right. Is it Kerry Pierce? Jerry Smith? No. Oh, next person. Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. Kerry?
Cam Drake.
Pardon?
Cam Drake. Cam Drake, C-A-M, Cam Drake.
That's not what it is.
Almost third one on the side, sir.
Okay. Jerry... Jerry, uh, I'm sorry, I can't read your writing to pronounce your last name.
It went Roger, Jerry, and Cam.
Pardon?
It went Roger, Jerry, B-Cam. I'm the third one to sign. C-A-M, D-R-A-K-E.
That's Cam. This is, this is the guy that was just there.
I know that.
And that is the guy that should be up now.
I don't know who that is.
That's the guy that's talking in the back now.
Okay. You'll come up, sir. Okay. I apologize, folks. I just got new glasses, too. State your name and your address, please.
I'm Cam Drake. Live at eleven thirteen Lawyers Road West. I do not want this, because he will be crushing all the time. Like my dad said, Martin Marietta has to deal with this. EPA out there all the time. And February the thirteenth, there was a brand-new crusher or gr- stump grinder went into place. I was going to Charleston, South Carolina. My son wanted to go with me. It'd been raining so much, and I said, no. He went with Papa. And that come in, about ten o'clock that Friday morning. And he just told a big flat lie. Trucking trailers going in there, seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, slamming tailgates, going on their Saturday, four, five o'clock afternoons. If he gets this passed, we are messed up. I disagree with it big time. We was, when he moved in, he come over and talked to him, and we cut up. His father-in-law did too. When he got rezoned last time, all of that stopped. I don't care. I don't want that stuff that in my house. My twelve, thirteen-year-old son, I got a sixteen-year-old daughter. When he was having dump trucks going in and out, sixteen-year-old daughter's come to my house every day. All of the mud was on the highway. I told my daughter to go a different way. Several of my buddies come to my house, went down Ridge Road, turned right on Lawyers to come to my house, because they was scared of the mud. It was chunks of mud that big. Union County Sheriff stopped, let four cars go in front of him. Get out of the mud. That right now, from the last two months, no mud on the highway. It's been fine. Trust me, I love it. My car's not getting dirty. My big truck's not getting dirty. They ain't too much noise. Like I said, if he gets this proved, there's no stopping. I want it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our fourth speaker. Come on up.
I'll be number four. Never get to be number one, but I'll be number four. I'm Jim Panacu, and I live at nine double oh five Indian Trail Fairview Road, which is approximately three-quarters of a mile from this place. The gentleman does a fine job. I mean, he's trying, but I'm telling you what, I think he's just overwhelmed. And to go any farther than what he's already gone is out of scope. I don't think he's, he'd be able to handle it. The neighborhood won't be able to handle it, I know. As far as the seven o'clock, the eight o'clock, or whatever his hours are, I, I go out in the mornings with a dog, and I can hear tracks running over his land over there, you know, track hoes and excavators and that kind of stuff. And I have seen flames shooting above the top of the trees. And like I said, I'm three-quarters of a mile from him. A good three-quarters of a mile. In, in my opinion, he's in the wrong, wrong, his operations in the wrong, he's not. He's a good fella. But, but the neighborhood, I don't think he's, is where he needs to be. And I definitely don't think he needs to expand. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mindy Black. State your name and address, please.
Mindy Black, one thousand five Simpson Road. When they put the pictures up, they were a bit misleading. It showed pretty much vacant land where we have a lot of houses surrounding that, and it's affecting everyone. We were under the pressure that Secure Turf was a landscape company, but not a stump dump, and I think that's where the problem lies. The smoke is overwhelming, and the tremendous fires that were there before, some got out of control, and they burned for weeks. And he, a lot of times, he, he fired them up at night, equipment running through the night, and we would wake up to sounds of the, like, excavators and such like that. As far as the new zoning, I'm really concerned about the environmental impact that it's gonna have. We have Crooked Creek runs through our property as well as his. We have a gas pipeline that runs through his property as well as ours. The smoke and air quality is really bad when he is burning. And as I said, the fires do get out of control, and he has no way to put them out. The ash is all over our trucks. I have livestock and worry about what, how this is affecting them. The noise from the concrete crushers and incinerators and the grinders, I honestly don't know how he's gonna keep that noise down, or keep the dust down from concrete. And I have photos for, and videos from the fires that were tremendous. Change to the community is gonna be negative. House values, I worry about that. Nobody wants to live by that. He had claimed at the last meeting, he's gonna be running seven to seven, but that has changed what he said today. Six days a week, twelve hours a day. Mud on the roads, and schools right down the road. I disagree totally with this, and it's, it's not a good fit for our neighborhood. It's just not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is, last name is Black, but I can't make out the first name.
He, he, no, he's one of the last.
Oh, okay. No problem. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Joe Black. State your name and address, please.
All right. Thank you for having me speak. My name is Joe Black, and I live on nine one four West Unaville Indian Trail Road. And I'm representing myself and my two sisters, who aren't able to be here tonight. We own the Black property, which joins up with Secure Turf. It's a hundred-acre tract of land. I've actually seen the pile of stuff from Ridge Road when I go by there on numerous occasions. So number one, it's gonna be an eyesore. We're looking at having our land, or trying to sell our land. We've had a gentleman, a company, looking at it. That hasn't gone through yet, but we're really concerned about the noise pollution. We're worried about the smoke, the ash that may come. I don't think anybody's gonna wanna put residential homes in an area that's gonna have that kind of racket and stuff going on. Developing that property will be a financial asset to Union County, 'cause it'll bring in tax revenue, where this other one, I don't think's gonna help the county at all. Biggest concern is, like I say, it's not only our property, but we know all those folks. I was raised on that land, and everybody around there, they have good folks, and I'm not saying he's not, but they don't want their property value to go down. And mom was sure that's gonna happen. And in our case, this guy, when they find out this company, they may pull out. They may not wanna even go through with it, or even worry about putting residences there. So we're definitely against it, and I'm representing myself and my sisters, as I said, but we are definitely against this, and I don't think it's what this community needs at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Kathy Black.
I don't, I'm opposed to it, but I understand.
Okay. Carl Black.
I think that's Earl, Mr. E.
State your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name is Earl Black. I live at nine eighteen Lawyers Road. And we were looking for a home about thirteen years ago, and we found this property that is, there's a church and a blank piece of land, and then our property starts, called Crooked Creek Farm. And we have a Crooked Creek on our property and the power line. And I love to sit in my back porch and watch the animals and the squirrels and stuff. And if that dust and stuff comes, we won't be able to sit out there, it'll be so covered. And I have a cough, so if I cough, but it's not virus or anything, I just have a cough. But I just, we love our land. When I drove out, we drove out there to look at it, I thought I'd found a little piece of heaven. I really did. And if we have this smoke and ash and all the noise, I, it's gonna really take the community down, so I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last name is Black again. I'm sorry. I gotta take these glasses back to Costco.
I'm Bruce Black. Live at nine eighteen Lawyers Road West. I'm opposed to Secure Turf getting rezoning for this operation. Burning the stumps, timber, debris has resulted in unbearable conditions, such as air pollution. There's a strong smell of smoke when you go out the door. Yeah, I mean, your eyes are burning, your nose is burning, you get irritation in your throat. I mean, it's really thick, and, I mean, you just don't wanna be out. You just don't wanna be out when it's like that. And they've been discussing the ash, and, I mean, it is, is a major problem. It's thicker sometimes than others, but I don't see that, since he's got this air curtain burner, that it's gotten any better. I think that thing tends to make it worse, because it just blows the ash up in the air. And then you have safety concerns. What if there's embers? And at the right time of year, late September, early October, there's weed or dry corn out there. I mean, the whole side of the county could go up. And I don't, and I've spoken to the fire marshal, and he, he said he's had a number of violations, even after he got the air curtain burner. And he said that, you know, a couple of times, it was just more than the fire departments could manage, and they just were trying to contain it. It wasn't an effort to actually put it out, and that there's just not enough water and infrastructure out there to be able to handle a large fire like that. And like I said, seventy-foot-tall flames in the middle of the night. And then you have the noise pollution, the, I heard the bulldozer out there clacking around today, and always the dump truck tailgates and the excavator operating in the middle of the night. It's, it's constant. There's always something going on over there that, you know, just takes away from your enjoyment of being out, out in nature. And it's just, you know, it's just not right for that area. It's not. And the water pollution, you know, I've got pictures of Crooked Creek. It's murky and sometimes just orange. And nothing like that before, two, three years ago. You could see the bottom just about anywhere. And it's not the case now. And then the roads, the trucks, truck traffic is, I don't even think it's a quarter of what it was when he was in operation out there. And it's been, it's been a well-deserved break, you know. It's just a lot less traffic. And then if he adds the concrete and the rock and the timber grinding operation, it's just gonna be that much more dust and noise, then I don't think any of us should put up with it. So I can only see negative impacts to the neighbors and the surrounding community, and I ask that you deny this rezoning request.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My name is Pat Sloan, and I live at thirteen eighteen Lawyers Road West, and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-six. Several years after we moved in, our taxes, our tax rate was doubled, and I called and questioned it, because, you know, we hadn't done anything to cause our taxes to double. And it just so happened, our neighbors had built a hog farm next door, right, basically in our backyard, but the attitude I got, or the response I got, was, ma'am, you knew you moved into a farming community when you moved out there, didn't you? Well, we're still a farming community. We have soybeans sometimes in our front yard. We have corns sometimes. Our neighbors have grain in their, their yards. We are not an industrial area. And I'm afraid that if things, if he is allowed to continue with his plans, it's gonna become an industrial area. And then what's gonna happen to all the homes that are around there now? I mean, we're already having problems with the heavy dump trucks, the head, the loud noises, the earth mover, whatever that piece of machinery is. I go to bed late at night, and at twelve-thirty at night, I'm hearing that earth mover building up that berm so that it's higher and higher and higher. I worry about the heavy traffic with the dump trucks and the school buses, because those trucks, they, they take over the whole road, and they are loaded. So that is my, that's another one of my concerns. We have gotten up at night because we smell smoke, thinking maybe our house is on fire, but it's not. It's the smoke that, from the fires that he's burning, that are wafting to, in our direction, so we think our house is on fire. The noise, like, like somebody else said, the slamming of the back end of the dump trucks, you can hear it everywhere. You can hear the clack, 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 clack of the earth mover. So that, that's another thing. And the intersections, wherever these trucks are turning, they are tearing up the intersections because they run off the road. And so there's big holes on the sides of the road right there at those intersections. And Lord knows, we've had enough accidents right there at the corner of Lawyers Road and Fairview Indian Trail Road. We don't, so far, it hasn't been a, a big dump truck that I know of, but there's been enough accidents, and it's just a matter of time before one of those big trucks gets involved, too. Thank you.
Ms. Sloan, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there a bus stop anywhere on that road? There, there are children that live on that road, right?
Not, not, not where I am. There might be on, on the other side. There's no children of school age between Fairview Indian Trail and Ridge Road. But the school buses are all up and down Ridge, Fairview Indian Trail, Lawyers Road, going to Piedmont. So, you know, that's a big concern I have.
Thank you.
I used to be a teacher's aide, kids. I love kids, and that worries me with, with the school buses and these, these big trucks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
I can answer that question. This young man has three kids that go to the Ford Ridge School. Yes, from Ridge Road to Lawyers Road, there is.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarification. Appreciate that. Okay, that comes to the end of our public comments. Is there anybody here that got in late that failed to sign up? Yes, sir?
I did, I did not realize there was a sign-up thing out there, and I would love to speak.
Come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Randall Roland Hasty, thirty-one oh two Ridge Road, which is, actually, on the back door of his property, connects to Mr. Black's property, who's been on sale for a long, long time. The school right down the road, which is not even a mile away, has more traffic going into the school than he has going on his property. If y'all look at the pictures, he has it well-covered. The only way you can see any berms or anything is look down the power lines where due power has cleared it out, so the trees don't grow around it. You can see it from Lawyers Road, and you can see it from Ridge Road, but you got the crane naked to look. From the front of his property, you can't see anything going on. All this hoo-ha and about the rock crusher, I haul heavy equipment for a living. I have been to these rock crushing places. They have old equipment. The old equipment is nothing like the new equipment. The new equipment has different things to make it quieter and keep it cleaner, and have water jets to keep it sprayed down on the inside to keep the dust down. Far as the fires go, I live on the back door of this man's property. I can, I actually up on a hill, just a little bit of a hill. I can, I actually up on a hill, just a little bit of a hill. I can go out on my front porch and look and don't even see the smoke or the flames. Now, granted, you can go in front of his property and maybe see a little fire, but it's nothing like everybody's making. And if it's such a big deal with all this ash and everything, why didn't somebody take a picture of the ash buildup on their vehicles? I ain't seen it yet. And second of all, everybody's complaining about this noise at late at night? He don't have any employees working late at night. So nobody can come in there and dump on his property. I know that for, I know that for a fact.
Calm down, everybody calm down.
I know that for-
How many more minutes has he got, Lee? I mean, you got one minute left.
Yes, sir, I know that for a fact because I drive my big truck over there every once in a while and park it. And I'm the only one that's there. When I park it, nobody's coming in and out. And there's some neighbors that live by it, drive big trucks and they get up early in the morning. So what little bit of noise they hear is early in the morning, it's not when you're asleep and the doors are closed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, with that. You spoke before, haven't you?
No, not yet.
Huh?
No, I have not.
Okay, yes, sir.
Gentlemen, hello. My name's Tom Slinglof, I live at thirty-six thirteen Ridge Road. I'm pretty much just catty corner to this place. And I guess I'm here to hoo-ha a little bit about the, the noise that's going on. It's, we're talking one, two o'clock in the morning, loud crashing. I'm very close to the plant, probably about to give you an idea, I'm about five hundred yards from the place. And the smoke and the fire, the last couple of months have been really nice. I guess, I gather it's because it's been shut down or they haven't been able to do much or what have you. But the, right there at that intersection where the power plant is, where the transfer station, there's an intersection that is busier when they're underway. When in the morning, the school buses are going through, that's a main thoroughfare, that's Ridge Road. It's heading for Porter's, you know, my wife's a teacher there. And she's terrified that something's gonna happen with these big trucks coming in and out of this place. There's gonna be a wreck there. We just had a real horrendous wreck the other day there. I mean, they had to come out and, you know, they got the big power lines and they had to come out with welders because the thing almost knocked over one of the huge power lines at the transformer station there. So as far as the noise, the noise is crazy loud. I mean, it, 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 there's no way you're, you're sleeping through that. The smoke and what have you, when they are burning, it's bad. And, you know, I, I did due diligence when I bought this place, I bought it back in August of eighteen. And, you know, I looked and it said residential, two hundred. All the, you know, and I, I move in there and the next time I know them, there's a dump. Stump dump, but it's a dump. And they're burning stuff, making all kinds of noises and I gotta tell you, had I known that, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have bought that place. There's a couple of other places I was looking in Union County. So I'm kinda, you know, sour grapes on the whole thing, but there's nothing I can do about it now except hope that this doesn't go through. Because if it does, property values are gonna drop dramatically, I'm, I'm just here to tell you. And it's loud, I don't, I don't care what anybody else says. It's smoky, it's loud, what everybody's telling you here is the truth. And I live pretty close to it, real close.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ray a question, please.
Okay.
Could I get you to come back up to the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember, cause all this has jogged my memory telling me, that gentleman in the blue green shirt, that gentleman over there, that all you wanted was a one acre spot for your shrubbery that you pulled up at your place?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And you said that's all I ever wanted?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Number two, is there a, did you purchase a stunt, a tub grinder?
No, sir.
Is there one on your property?
No, sir, there's not. The machine that Cam spoke about was a screener, the five fourteen TS soil screener. I just used it, you know, got it on a demo from the manufacturer. And he brought it out to, to let us try out. That was one of those, I'll show you the picture of the machine that we had. That's it right there, five fourteen. The noise decibel when that machine is running is eighty-four, eighty-four decibels. An eighteen wheeler going thirty-five miles an hour is eighty-two decibels. And again, we, that's, when that machine was running, I was amazed how quiet it is. It's just a vibratory deck screen, it's not a trimal, there's no crushing, there's no grinding. It's a very quiet machine. Again, we were demoing it to see what, what type of product it would produce.
Mr. Ray, I have passed your place many times at night on my way home from Indian Trail or from Charlotte. And I've told my wife, I don't know how many times, when I see the flame, he's illegal. That's all I'm with you. And I thank you for your, your response to him.
Am I able to respond to any of the other comments or? Okay, thank you.
Hang on, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This, this was just a demo, so you don't have this on your property now?
That's correct.
What about the grinder?
I, I don't own a grinder.
So you'll have one bring, brought in when you need one?
If, if, if we need one, yes, sir.
And till, so you, you're basically you rent it, lease it, whatever?
Yes, sir.
So who's to say that they're gonna bring in a new one? Like the gentleman said, that it's, it's not as loud as the older ones?
Yeah, I, I, again, I can't answer that question of, you know, what they're gonna bring us and, and if we're gonna buy a new one or if we're gonna try out an old one. Again, I, I don't see a, a market for mulch at my location, I don't have the room for it. And I don't wanna compete with everybody else that's making mulch.
Oh, it's not so much the mulch, it's the, it's the concrete that you're gonna be grinding stuff?
Right.
Lee, what's our, what's our noise ordinance? What's the level?
Uh, there's not really. Um, the noise ordinance for Union County is enforced by the Sheriff's Department. And there's really not a, it's an old noise ordinance, there's really not decimal levels. It's just, there are certain times you can and can't operate equipment, but there's also a lot of exclusions to it. So a lot of industrial type businesses, farming, a lot of things like that are actually exempt from the, the noise ordinance. Whether or not this type of use would be exempt, I, I don't know, that, that would be actually-
Who, who sets the, the noise ordinance?
Uh, the Sheriff's Department. So that, that'd probably be a better question for Sheriff Kathy.
So we don't, we don't have a, a decibel that we can go by?
No, sir.
And we can't, we can't set, set anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, I should say that, that you, you could as a condition, if, if it was, if you were to, to recommend approval of it and you wanted to put a condition on there, you could recommend a condition of, of not to exceed a certain decibel amount.
Well, I know certain towns have their own decibel.
Right.
You know, noise ordinance.
They do, right, right.
But the county do-
The county does not have a, have a standard on that. As, as, as far as I know, I, I've read the noise ordinance and as far as I know, there's no, there's no decimal number in there.
So it goes through, it goes through the sheriff's office?
Yes, sir.
If, if you think it's too loud, then you call the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Ray, I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can you just explain to the layman's how the, the fire pit works?
Yes, sir.
And you, you said you had a time limit on it when you can burn?
Yes, sir.
When that, when that time limit comes close to the end, are you still burning? Are you still, you know, is that generator still firing up?
The way our permit reads is that we cannot add any new material to the pit after four o'clock in the afternoon. So we, we keep that blower on to keep it hot, to cut down on smoke and, and finish the, the burn of the material that is in the pit. And that's set by the-
So you can't add anything after four o'clock?
We are not supposed to add any-
But you can pile it, you can pile, you can pile that thing up to the, to the hill at four o'clock? Just before four o'clock, so it's gonna burn all night?
Again, our permit states that the material cannot be piled higher than the curtain of air in the pit that we've dug. So if we've dug a fifteen foot deep pit, we can only put that depth of material in the pit while it's burning.
But then it burns overnight though, it continues to burn or?
It, it just is, as ash and coal, it's, it's not a flaming fire, it's just ash and coal.
Mr. Ray, um, when you came before us in two thousand seventeen, there was no incinerator at all involved in this. This was gonna be an organic, natural dump that you continued composting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who gave you permission to make an incinerator out of it?
I, I, nobody gave me permission, sir. I was looking for a way to efficiently dispose of that material. And so that, that's been the most economical and efficient and quick way to, to repurpose that material, to get rid of that material.
Alright, and this was, uh, but see, it was supposed to be all your own material?
Yes, sir.
It was not supposed to be a for-profit business?
Yes, sir.
That's the issue that I have a problem right here with a man asking for more when he has divulged and, and he has went away from what he said he was gonna do the first time.
Yes, sir, I absolutely agree, understand what you're saying. I, I stand before you, I'm asking for forgiveness. When I stood in two thousand seventeen, again, like I said earlier, my goal was to get permission to run my landscape business from the property. And you guys and, and the county commissioners allowed that graciously. Again, I had no idea it was going to be as, it was gonna take off as, as well as it did. So again, I'm-
Yeah, but, but this is my point. And, and this what makes me upset is, why did you start a, a business and burning other people's trash when you told us this was my private, personal use? Cause you guys remember that, correct? Two thousand seventeen. And who, you say your permit says you had to quit at four o'clock in the afternoon. What permit?
That's our, our permit from the Department of Air Quality. That's the, the EPA for the state, they're, they're based out of Mooresville. That's the Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
Sir?
I got it.
Are you not shut down right now? The calls are-
Time out, time out.
We've already discussed from the crowd, okay? This is response, okay? Please, please, please. One final-
I'm through, my question.
I got one final question.
Yes, sir.
When you did this, uh, did you do this from a business plan perspective?
Yes, sir.
What kind of research did you do?
Really just watching other trucks go by my, by my property.
Did you go down to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library and look up this type of business and find out how many there are in the area and what process they went through?
No, I, I, I've utilized stump dumps over the years, over the decades in my business. So I had a good understanding of, of where they were geographically, what they charged, what they're-
Understand, understand. Okay. So, but going back to Everett's deal, you've done something you're asking forgiveness for?
Yes, sir.
Top of research, that would be, would be happening?
Yes, sir.
My lecture?
Nope, I got you. Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of how you formulated your thoughts, your ideas, et cetera. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
One more question. When you, when you, when Everett asked you about your, your own personal shrubs and stuff, is that just on your property or is that from your business, the guys that? How big is your landscape company? How many trucks you got?
Uh, we run about twenty trucks.
So they're all bringing stuff back every day?
It, it depends, yes, sir. If we're trimming shrubs, if we're removing shrubbery from somebody's house to plant new shrubs, then there will be some material that's brought back.
Oh, there's gonna be material brought back, believe me. I did it for twenty-seven years. I noticed stuff being, being brought back every day.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's not always just what you think it is. There's a lot of trash mixed in there. Now, do you go through that? Do you have somebody go through it to weed out the, the plastic bottles and the cans?
I'm usually helping the guys unload their trucks and it's either leaves, shrub trimming, debris, grass clippings, even the fall, we're bringing back a lot of, you know, leaves. So yeah, they'll throw their, their can of Monster in there, we pick that out and we, we dispose of it. Again, I, I live on the property, so I don't wanna see that stuff blowing across the, the field or, or my front yard. And I, and I certainly don't want it going to my neighbors. So, yes, sir, we, we, we keep an eye on that and we pick it up all the time.
You still, you still didn't answer the question, I don't think, about the burning?
Yes, sir.
When you, when it's burning at, at four o'clock, it's, it's fifteen feet tall. It's not gonna go out in two, three hours, four hours. So it's gonna continue burning overnight?
It's in a pit in the ground, a fifteen foot or twenty foot pit.
Now, is that, is that diesel generator or blower, that fan blowing on it all night?
No, sir, we, that, again, the permit states we have to cut that machine off at six o'clock. So we, we, we cut that machine off.
I just, the, the picture that's up there, I, I see all this debris at the bottom, I just don't see that burning out anytime soon. I mean, I, I, I've seen these things and they, they just, they go until the next day until you add more stuff to it.
Yes, sir, uh, again, we, we're not trying to burn all throughout the night. I wanna sleep good and, and not worry about embers flying around. When there's ash or dust on the neighbor's cars, that, that's not what I wanna do. Cause it's on my car and that, that's not what I want for my neighbors at all.
Is, is there any kind of fire extinguisher equipment around this pit? Do you have any hoses, big, you know, fire hoses or?
We have a water truck on site, but again, it, you know, it's, it's a, it's a splash of water compared to what it would, what it would need to be. But I've, I've worked closely with Kevin Philammon and Kevin Ragoli, Union County Fire Chief. They've been out a number of times, they've never cited me, they've never given me any violations that somebody else spoke of. They've come out and looked at, looked at things, they wanna come out and do training with us and, and show their guys that type of equipment. So again, I, I wanna work with anybody, any agencies and these guys are, would be the ones to respond if we had a, an issue.
Is there city water where you are?
Uh, yes, sir, there's city water and we have wells.
Where's the, where's the closest fire hydrant to you?
It's in my front yard.
Would you, what would you think about tapping into that and bringing a fire hydrant back to where you're burning? So you could, you could hook up to, to that right away?
I'm happy to do that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And again, any sort of guidelines that you guys would put in place as far as a noise or anything like that, you say, you know, you can't have a noise amount any higher than X amount. Again, I'm looking for y'all's guidelines and, and that sort of thing.
People in the audience said that the sheriffs come out because of noise. How many times has the sheriff's been out there?
I, I've never spoken to a sheriff about the noise. I, if, if, if I am making noise after hours, I want these folks to call the sheriff. I do. Because if, if it's noise that I can't sleep or I'm gonna be calling on my neighbors. So anytime somebody has, hears noise that's, that's disturbing them, I want them to call the sheriff. And I put my hand on the Bible, I've never talked to the sheriff about noise at my place.
How many miles do you think the, the sound travels from a stunt grinder or from a chipper or from a concrete crusher?
I, I'm not an audio specialist, sir, I, I wouldn't know what, what that would be.
At least a mile, mile and a half?
I, I really couldn't tell you, I don't know. Yeah, I would assume it would travel, you know.
At least a mile.
Depending on vegetation and time of year and geographical factors, that sort of thing.
Cause I've, I've had them to chip out tree stands for me before. And, you know, I could, I could hear them just as plain at my farm. I mean, you just hear it, that's all there is. A tub grinder and believable noise.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, uh, is there any more board discussion, most ourselves? Okay? Do we have a motion for a vote?
Make a motion, we deny this.
Okay? Any other motion or discussion about that motion? Okay, motion?
Yes, yeah, I have a discussion about that motion. Uh, it seems to me that this, we, you know, there's some information that we don't seem to get clearly here to make a decision. I, I think we should pass this up to the, to the Board of County Commissioners to, to decide themselves. I certainly understand Mr. Ray's got a business and he wants to, he wants to make a living. I'm hearing all kinds of things about noises and, and other noises aren't there, dust is here, no, the dust is not there. But the fact of the matter is, you have a lot of people here who are upset. Now, if, 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 if Mr. Ray was in business doing this stuff, these people all moved in here and complained, I'd say, hey, you knew where, you knew where you were going. But this noise and, and this, this dust and all these problems seem to have come up after these people lived here, which makes, which makes them victims of the problem. But I don't feel like we're getting all the correct information here.
But he does have, he does have a landscape company, he's trying to add to it now.
That's correct, correct, but, but he's-
He's making a living on his landscape company.
That is correct, he's making a living and, and that's, I'm a small businessman, I was a small businessman all my life. I certainly have sympathy for him, I hope he does well. Even happier the fact that he's recycling it. Even happier the fact that he's, he's recycling at the same time. But all these people over here, or, or, you know, how many of them you think didn't come? Cause God knows that everybody'd come to the, the board meeting. The, the, uh, the periphery of, 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 of his, his business is making everybody crazy. And...
Yeah, but you got, you gotta look at this. His rights stop when other people's rights are being affected.
Without a doubt, without, without.
And...
Sort of, sort of.
Aight. And the other thing is, you talk about let the county commission make decision. They've been caught up in this thing with Richard Griffin. And it cost my community tens of thousands of dollars because we allowed him to have a stump done. And all of a sudden, a C and A, C and D went in, a construction demolition. The next thing was, there was a major company in Charlotte, national company, wanted to build a one-hundred-acre new garbage dump out there. We've had issues with that. The only reason we can't have issues with the Union County done, you don't know what it's like to wake up every morning and hear trash packers pushing construction material debris on a hill that's a hundred feet high, pushing dirt on it. And when I walk to my truck every morning, I hear that. And it's two miles away.
Okay, guys. With all due respect, a motion has been made, but before we vote on it, that does have rights after we vote, right?
Yes, sir.
Which you're gonna talk to him about.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to talk about it now or...
The motion has been made to deny this. All those in favor to deny it, please raise your right hand. Got it, Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lee, you wanna come up and discuss what next steps are?
Yes, sir.
Could we have a five-minute break?
As soon as that, as soon as he's through, we're gonna do it.
The next step in this process will be a public hearing before the Union County Board of Commissioners. Your, um, your recommendation will be forwarded up to the board. That public hearing will be on, uh, Monday, July sixth. That'll be in this room, six o'clock. And then likely, the board will make a decision on July twentieth. That's, that's their gen, that's their general process.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, uh, this case is dismissed. And thank everybody for coming tonight, your comments, et cetera. We're gonna adjourn for about five to eight minutes while the room clears out, clears out, and we get ready for our second case. Thank you.
Lee, Lee, what, what was that second date?
Twenty.
July.
Of July.
The first, the first one was July sixth.
First one was July sixth.
That's here.
At six.
At six.
Yes, sir. And then the decision is July twentieth at three.
They switched their, their times when they had their meetings? They switched their times when they had their meetings?
It used to be seven to seven.
Yeah.
They changed it to six to three.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck to Mr. Ray.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Good night, Bill.
I think he's at the booth.
I appreciate it. Yeah, Ray revenue, and I think he has a good business model. I think it's a long place.
Yeah, he's, 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 he's thrown into ma, into industrial, uh, uh, unit in a residential neighborhood. It's unfortunate. Uh, but I hate to, I hate to see anybody owns a business. I owned a business my whole life. I hate to see the government's gonna slap you out.
And I think about all these, these new developments I drive by where, you know, you clear it out and then you got all these massive green stuffs. And they don't burn flame high. They smoke for days and days and days.
Yeah. I can also tell you, these people, if I, all these subdivisions coming out there, they might wish they had, they had recycle bin.
Well, actually, it can burn away. I don't...
I'm saying, he has, he has opinions. Actually, it's, it's, man. That's, that's, I understand that. But, but I just, I was not... I hate to see, hey, I hate to see the government crush the business. It just, it just, there's something wrong with it. But he didn't believe it was wrong there. He probably makes a good money out of it too. Yeah.
Bjorn, is there still a lot of people in that other room? There's no speakers?
So they're kicking off right now?
This would be easy compared to the frozen.
Yeah, if it was a little closed, that it might have smokes that...
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm serious. Ever need somebody or have a friend, call me.
Yeah, he did.
It's location, location, location.
You know, I take, but take it, take it from a guy who's been in the economy, in his shoes, was a better growing business. Your business starts growing, you start making money. You can see us give a customer, give a rocket, we're customers, and break that, make the business grow. You don't see them. I, well, obviously, we, we may not do it right now. But I, I, I know, I feel that, I don't feel that they're in a position. They say he got, I think I'm going to back say I'm making money off of it.
Billy, keep it on the line.
But, but yeah, but he, what he apparently, he's got some education or a certain he's to do.
Entertain his family.
He'll put up a landfill, right? He'll, right next to it, a school.
Stop that, we're clients. They pay their...
I think, I think he's... If, if those people all go, did happen to... He and friends, they, they went to write through the wrong...
You may have to escort me out. That guy's probably making noise. That's pretty relevant.
Yeah, no, I, I saw it. It's almost coming in.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Let's call the adjournment we had back in the session here and start with, uh, number seven on our agenda. I wanna thank everybody for being here. We have no speakers in the audience tonight other than the applicant. We're getting ready to start CZ twenty twenty oh oh three, Cuthbertson Road. Lee?
Yes, sir. So this is CZ twenty twenty zero zero three, working title of Cuthbertson Road. Um, it is a request to amend the official zoning map of Union County by rezoning a parcel of land from R forty, which is residential, forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, to R four conditional, which is residential, um, four thousand square foot minimum lot size as conditional district. Uh, the applicant requests this rezoning to develop a, um, a, a neighborhood with a mix of three hundred and sixty age-restricted, single-family homes. And that's on, um, if, if, this is kind of oriented, um, south is here. So that's, that's the single-family homes. And ninety-three market rate townhomes, which are right here, uh, for a total of four hundred and fifty-three units. Uh, the project also consists of some common open space, uh, for use by the residents, dedication of land, um, for the Carolina Thread Trail, and a commitment from the developer to improve the intersection of Cuthbertson Road and Newtown Road. Uh, the project's access will come from three access points. You can see there's two right here, uh, that are, um, lined up with each other, uh, one serving the single-family side, one serving the townhome side, and another just to the north. The project will meet setbacks of twenty feet in the front, twenty-five in the rear, and five on the side for the single-family. Um, so obviously, the townhomes have zero lot lines cause they touch each other. Um, the overall, um, gross density of the project is approximately one point nine two units per acre. Uh, since this is a conditional rezon request, the district will be bound, um, by all conceptual plans and conditions, um, as part of the, submitted as part of process or approval. Um, so again, this was a site plan submitted by the applicant. Again, you can see, single-family side is on the south. Uh, those are all age-restricted units. And the townhome side to the north, which were, which were townhomes. Again, you have a lot of common open space in the back. A lot of this is floodplain. And you have some common open space on the north side as well. The applicant is proposing to accommodate a, a potential connection to another piece of property across, that's the West Fork, um, Twelve Mile Creek. Um, and again, as I stated before, um, dedicate, um, land, uh, for the Carolina Thread Trail. And they've committed to, um, to, to, uh, improve the intersection at, um, Newtown and, and Cuthbertson. I believe the applicant has their, um, traffic engineer here. Bjorn is also here if you want any more detailed information about that. Part of that, part of that negotiation process was, um, their, their TIA identified some impacts to Providence Road. Every development that comes through does. Um, there is a, a widening project for sixteen that is, is being delayed. So trying to figure out, is there another, is there somewhere else that, that, that could be improved in, in, in the interim as part of this development? Um, again, these are just some images, um, submitted by the developer. This is showing the, the entrance and the sidewalks along, um, Cuthbertson Road. And then just some features of, of the neighborhood on the right. Um, some of the photographs of the area. Again, um, the site is currently vacant. Um, you can see, uh, this is Cuthbertson Road. This is looking, um, toward, um, the Newtown side, the Newtown entrance. So the next development, um, to the north would be, uh, oh, I'm drawing a blank. I forget the name of it. But there's another development, um, just to the north of this. Lawson, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Lawson's the development to the north. This picture on the top right is looking toward the intersection of Providence Road. So got a good bit of commercial, um, just over the bridge. I think there's a Walmart Neighborhood Center. There's a Lowe's, McDonald's, a Harris Teeter, a lot of stuff going on over there. The bottom left picture is looking into the site. So this would be on the north side of the property. There's a large field. This is primarily the, the floodplain area. You see, it's kinda low in there. And then the property on the bottom right i- is looking on the south side of the property, where the, uh, single-family side would be.
Lee, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that, uh, towards Newtown, are you aware of what Five Stones Church is doing?
Um, yeah, Bjorn and I were actually talking about that, um, right before the, 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 the meeting and, and earlier today. Uh, that TIA is not complete yet, is that correct? So, so we don't know the results of that TIA. But we do know that there is a, a church that, that wants to build in, it's in the village of Wesley Chapel. Uh, but we do know about that project.
It's gonna be big.
Yes, sir.
School?
Yes, sir. That's what we understand.
Thank you very much.
This is, this is not necessarily a donut hole, but, um, this is the Town of Waxaw, kind of to the west and to the east. So it kind of wraps around a little bit. But, um, it's not necessarily a hole in the donut because, um, this area is, isn't completely surrounded by the Town of Waxaw. We have some, a lot of areas in the county like that. Um, these parcels are currently zoned R forty. Uh, this land, again, is, is vacant. There's not a whole lot on this property. Kind of the, the general development pattern in, in the area, there's quite a bit going on. So you've, you've got some, some denser neighborhoods. Lawson's a, you know, I would classify one of those as a denser neighborhood. Um, you've got some fairly low-density neighborhoods over here to the south. And then, again, at the intersection, you have, you have quite a bit of commercial, um, property. But you've also got some, some farms interspersed with, with, with this as well. So this is pretty typical of a, of an area that's experiencing, um, a lot of development that's transitioning from agricultural over to suburban slash urban type uses. Few, um, environmental features on, on the property. Um, again, you've got both, um, legs of the Twelve Mile Creek kinda converging right here, you got West Fork and East Fork. So you've got a lot of floodplain associated with that. So on the south side, you can see that southernmost piece of property, there's a lot of floodplain back there. And on the north, um, you also have a lot of floodplain, um, on those properties. You also have a couple of, um, ponds, um, that they're located on property with some potential wetlands. That would be, um, developed a little bit further, um, if it was approved during the, uh, site planning and construction development, um, process. Uh, most properties in this area are served by Union... Uh, most properties in this area are served by Union County Water and Sewer. But that's not every property. Some of these, some of these neighborhoods in the south, these are all septic systems. But, but Lawson, all the commercial development in this area, that's all served by Union County Public Water and Sewer. And this, this property has, has direct access to both. Uh, the parcels have been zoned R40 since Union County established zoning. To our knowledge, there have been no rezoning requests or special use permits requested for the property. Before I get into transportation, since this is a residential development, we do send comments to, or we do solicit comments from schools because we want to hear their feedback. Even though it is an age, proposed age-restricted neighborhood, ninety-three of those lots are townhomes, but we still ask the schools to, to provide comments.
Could you give us those comments?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to read those verbatim. I don't want to, I don't want to leave anything out directly from the schools. So it might take me just a couple minutes.
No problem.
The above referenced development, three hundred and sixty age-restricted, single-family units and ninety-three townhomes located on Cuthbertson Road near the intersection with Providence Road will be within the following school attendance areas for the 2020-2021 school year. Waxaw Elementary, which is currently at eighty-four percent of its capacity. Parkwood Middle, which is currently at eighty-one percent rated capacity. And Parkwood High, which is currently at seventy-nine percent rated capacity. By our accounting, this will bring the number of planned and not-built housing units within the Waxaw Elementary School area to approximately nineteen hundred and forty-two units. This includes Main Street Station Towns, one hundred and seventeen units. Grove Manor, one hundred and eight units. Ardmore Waxaw, two hundred and forty-five units. Mill Bridge, five hundred and two units. Preserve at Forest Creek, one hundred and eighty-two units. Conservancy at Waxaw Creek, fifty-nine units. cottages of Old Waxaw, three additional units. Rome Creek Station, one hundred and twenty-nine units. King's Corner, six units. Belshire, one hundred and, one hundred and five units. Villages of Waxaw, thirty-three units. Also in the Parkwood attendance area, for a total of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two residential units, are forty-five units in the Prospect Elementary School and eight hundred and thirty-five units in the Western Union Elementary area. These proposals are not expected to present an adverse impact to enrollment at the above schools. Those are the comments from the schools verbatim. As far as transportation goes, and again Bjorn is here, if you have any detailed questions about transportation. You have some traffic, one traffic count on this map for Providence Road, just south of the intersection of Cuthbertson slash Kensington. It's about twenty thousand five hundred vehicle trips a day. You have another one just to the west of the development site on Cuthbertson Road, and that is eleven thousand vehicle trips per day. Uh, Providence Road is funded to be widened to four lanes. We, we have stopped putting the date on, on this map because DOT has run into some fairly significant funding issues, and this project keeps getting pushed back. Uh, I will say that there is a one green line on this map, the one that I'm kind of tracing with my cursor there. Bjorn, is that's correct, that that's been removed from the CTP? So that, that, that line doesn't exist anymore. It's on this map, but it doesn't exist.
Which line was that?
I'm sorry. The one that I'm kind of, my cursor's kind of highlighting right now?
All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this property lies within the mixed residential land use category of the Union County Comprehensive Plan. This mixed residential category anticipates higher-density residential projects and different housing options other than detached, single-family residential. Uh, the proposed development also sits close to a small community center, which is this kind of orangey circle, which is centered on the intersection of Cuthbertson Road and Providence Road. Uh, small community centers are intended to have a mix of commercial and office and are appropriate for some higher-density residential components. I, I do note that, as many of you, all of you know, we are in the process of updating that land use plan. So that, um, we don't know exactly how those land use patterns are going to play out, but based on the current plan, this is what the current plan shows. Uh, and based on the current plan, the development appears to be consistent with the current Comprehensive Plan. It provides higher-density, single-family homes and townhomes consistent with the description of the mixed residential category. Uh, it is also located near an existing commercial node, the one centered at Providence and Cuthbertson. We also sent this to the Town of Waxaw, since they were so close, we wanted to get their comments on it. Uh, so I'll read those, I'll read those verbatim, just like the schools. So Town of Waxaw's comments, since this proj- project is located on the edge of municipality, we slid their comments. They are as follows. Town of Waxaw, general comment. This request is located in an area that Waxaw staff has identified as a potential joint planning area. While it is not a doughnut hole, it is between the existing contiguous and satellite town limits, and therefore is of great interest. The town will be sending a request to the county to work on a joint plan for areas like this that are between our town limits, but not necessarily a doughnut hole. We feel that joint planning areas like this will help to clarify expected growth opportunities for both the town and county, as well as provide clarity to the development community. And a specific Town of Waxaw planning comment, there were two of those. While the internal streets appear to have sidewalks, there does not look to be any sidewalk facilities on Cuthbertson Road to encourage residents on both sides of the development to walk to the nearby commercial sites or Lawson community. And the second one is a Carolina Thread Trail is planned through the southern end of the subject property. The approved development to the west is in the town limit, I'm sorry. The approved development to the west and the town's limits will be constructing the portion of the trail on their property as part of their conditional zoning approval. We request that the county consider making construction of the Thread Trail from the property line to property line part of the conditional approval. So they, they basically requested a condition that the developer construct the Carolina Thread Trail on their property. Um, and then the Waxaw Police Department had three comments. This is in a doughnut hole that will produce no tax revenue for police services. This will produce traffic into town that is already a congested traffic pattern and will cause a workload on the PD traffic cars, crashes, speeding DWIs. Two, we would most likely be the responding units on calls for service as a result of our close proximity, close, close proximity and delayed response time from the county officers. And three, added pedestrian traffic downtown for shopping and our events, which would cause for additional officer presence. So those are Town of Waxaw comments. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Lee, I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
In the meeting that you had with the applicant and the residents, how many people attended?
The, the official community meeting, I believe there were, I don't know the official count off the top of my head, but they were around the maximum, I think around twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
About six hundred people in Lawson.
Yes, sir. Now, now granted, we probably-
More than six hundred.
Yeah, now, now granted, probably not every single resident in Lawson was, was notified. We don't, we don't notify the entire neighborhood. We'll, we'll notify a certain radius around the development. But I, I know that the Homeowners Association was, was one of the, um, that was one of the letters that, that went out, so.
Lee, when was that meeting?
There were actually three. Uh, there were two unofficial meetings that were held last year, maybe early this year.
The one you were part of?
I'm sorry?
The one you were part of?
Um, that was last week.
Okay, so could there be potentially some impact from COVID-19 as far as attendance to something like that?
Uh, it's, it's possible. It, it was a, um, and I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about that because it was their community meeting. Uh, it was a virtual meeting.
And Lawson, what is the zoning density of, of Lawson, since it's the closest adjacent neighborhood?
Um, I believe, I believe it is R3, which is about three units per acre.
It's a doughnut hole. Who's, what far to come, what fire company's going there? Waxaw?
That is, that is, yes, I think that's in Waxaw, probably on the edge of Waxaw and Wesley Chapel. Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Wesley Chapel?
Yeah. So they'll probably both be responders to that, to that area.
Okay, because Wesley Chapel has three different stations.
Yes, sir.
So the one, the closest one to it isn't manned. The furthest one away is. It's going to burn. Okay.
Lee, I have to make this comment. It says that, uh, on page six, this is a funded project, talking about Providence Road, although construction timelines are unknown. And that this, this is probably going to cut across sarcasm, but I don't mean it that way. It's promises, promises, promises. Because this won't happen in my lifetime. Probably won't even happen in your kid's lifetime.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we don't know when sixteen will, will happen.
And the other thing, I'm concerned that this is putting a dozen eggs in a half a dozen carton, and it doesn't fit, traffic-wise.
Uh, sir, I understand.
I just want to make sure that I say that. Okay, any other questions for Lee?
You know my situation with Providence Road.
I do.
I just can't see more cars coming up Providence Road.
It's ridiculous. It is ridiculous.
I got to pack a lunch to get out of my vellum. It's crazy.
The street behind Lowe's with the light where Aldis is? Lowe's shut it down. They got it blocked off. You can't go around behind Lowe's to get to that light. You got to go back out to, to McDonald's exit, turn right, to get back on Providence. Unless you go out by the lawn and garden center.
Sure.
If you can get on the road. Okay, anybody else got any questions?
Uh, yeah, Lee, uh, what, what is the, this is, is an age-restricted development of townhomes, is that correct? Not townhomes, the residences?
Yes, so the-
Okay, that, 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 that's not talking, that is restricted. And what is the percentile of, of homes that you're going to have people with, uh, under fifty-five?
Yes, sir. So there's probably going to be two answers to this question. There's going to be the answer that, that I give you from a, the, the condition, if it was approved, that the county is going to place on this project. And there's probably going to be a different answer, I think, that, that the developer's going to give you from a deed restriction and, and covenant standpoint. Our restriction is going to be based on state and federal law, and it's going to be eighty-twenty split. So eighty percent of those homes would have to be age-restricted, and twenty percent could be market rate. Um, and that's, that's the, we've, we've had numerous discussions with our county legal staff, and since that's the basis in, in federal and state law, that will be the condition that is, if it was approved, that would be approved as part of the conditional rezoning.
So if they have a different idea, it makes a difference.
Right.
That would be the law.
Right, that, that would be the condition. The, the developer would be free to increase that amount with the deed restriction or restrictive covenant if, if they wanted to. The county just wouldn't enforce it.
Is that for the whole development or just the age-restricted portion?
Just the age-restricted portion.
Wait a minute, the county would not enforce it?
We would not enforce anything above and beyond the eighty-twenty.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Right, right, right. We would enforce that.
We would enforce the eighty percent.
Correct. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Sorry.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lee, you may want to refer this to Bjorn, but why are we not getting the TIA with Five Stones and looking at both, both of them together?
And Bjorn, if you want to come on up, I can give a, a short answer. I'm sure Bjorn can elaborate on this. We did reach out to the, the Village of Wesley Chapel. It's just not far enough along in the process. That TIA is not complete for the church yet. Bjorn, is there anything you want to add to that?
Uh, that's, that's correct. We were anticipating these questions and have been wrestling with it as well. Uh, it is within the Village of Wesley Chapel. We spoke with their planner six hours ago, had this very same discussion. Thankfully, uh, the traffic engineer working on that site is in this room, and I'd be happy to defer to him to give the absolute most up-to-date information about that site.
For the record, I'd like to have it. I appreciate the good work. That's great, being on point like a bird dog. Thank you.
Do you want, do you want Michael to come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, Michael Wickline with Design Resource Group at two four five nine Wilkinson Boulevard in Charlotte.
Welcome.
Yeah, so performed the TIA for this site. Also, we're in the process of performing for the Five Stones Church. Really, we just got scoping approval from NCDOT and their, and MSTA, the Municipal School of Traffic and, you know, Association that has to take care of all school studies. We are currently dealing with trying to determine how we want to handle the traffic counts due to COVID. That's a big concern now because you have other schools in the area-
Correct.
-that we can't count because they're not in. We can't have the most accurate data, so.
Social library.
Yeah, exactly. So there, there's, there's, the traffic counts right now aren't considered technically valid, and we're working with DOT at this point to determine the best way to account for that traffic. I can say, at least for this TIA, for the, the, for the Cuthbertson rezoning TIA, we actually looked at, I think it was eight different developments in the area that have not been constructed yet, accounted for that traffic in the traffic study, as well as applied a four percent compounded growth rate per year to try to cover for some of that unknown. So some of the traffic that will be generated by the school is likely covered in this TIA because of the growth rate that was applied to the existing traffic patterns that were collected in October of last year.
So the only access and egress into this subdivision is either on Cuthbertson or Newtown, is that right?
So the access into this development specifically is only on Cuthbertson. There are a total of three-
If you, if you're coming from one way-
Oh, yes, yes.
If you're coming from the other, you're coming off of Newtown to get in there.
Yes, exactly.
If you turn to Providence and Newtown, come around the backside.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, appreciate it. Okay, Lee, any other comments?
No, sir.
Need more comments from Lee or Bjorn? With the output, I'd like to make a comment. You'll state your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you.
We welcome you.
Is that yours, Jeff? Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Shannon Bowling. I live on three thousand nine Blickling Drive, Waxaw, North Carolina. Um, I'm here representing David Weekly Homes, and I want to thank you guys for having an in-person meeting tonight. We, we certainly appreciate it.
Sorry for so long getting to you.
That's okay, that's okay. I, I would much rather have the, the face-to-face meeting. I'd also like to thank staff for, for their efforts on this particular application. We have been working on it for quite some time, and we appreciate Lee and Bjorn's guidance, assistance, and input as, as we went along. I'm the land manager with David Weekly Homes, and I'm in charge of sourcing new land deals, finding opportunities for the Charlotte Division. I've been with the company seventeen years, all in the same role. I want to share with you just a little information about the company and about why we're talking about age-restricted here in this particular spot. After I go through the first couple slides, I'm going to turn it over to Walter Fields, our zoning consultant with Walter Fields Group. And we also have, you've already spoke to Michael, our traffic engineer. We also have Eddie Moore from McAdams here to help with some technical questions on the engineering side. So with that, I'll get started. David Weekly Homes. If you guys haven't heard of us, we're a privately owned builder. Uh, we were founded in Houston, Texas in nineteen seventy-six. We've been in the Charlotte area since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, currently, we're the seventeenth largest builder in the country. And in Charlotte, we're in about twelve communities. We're at about two hundred homes a year, and we're looking to be at about two hundred and thirty homes this year, and with their average price point just north of four hundred thousand. And locally and nationally, we've been recognized for our home designs, our customer service, and high-quality communities. And we have four different product segments or housing types. We have traditional David Weekly Homes, which is our market rate, kind of the three-per-acre type of communities in the suburbs. We have a central living product, which is more of a high-density, urban, closer to downtown Charlotte, where, you know, the townhomes might be twenty units per acre, three stories. We have an imagination product line, which is more moderately priced, and we do those in the sub- We have an imagination product line, which is more moderately priced, uh, and we do those in the suburbs as well. And then, uh, last but not least, we have Encore, which is our age-restricted, uh, product. We call it age-qualified. So if I say age-qualified, it means the same thing as age-restricted. So when we started working on this about a year ago with the family, uh, it's, it's a really big deal, uh, to David Weekly. It's a really, uh, big investment. So we got a third-party consultant involved to do a market study for us. And we're not just looking at this spot. We looked at all of the Charlotte MSA to figure out, you know, where's the best place to do an age-restricted community. And some of the information that, uh, we got from Strategic Insights was exciting, and I wanted to share that with you guys tonight. First off, uh, fifty-five and over is the fastest-growing demographic in Charlotte, and currently, we're at, uh, forty percent of the market. And it, we expect to add fifty-four thousand households in the next five years. Uh, forty-one percent of the, uh, new home sales are fifty-five and over, and only twenty-nine percent of the resales are fifty-five and over. And demand is strongest in the northern and southern regions of the hourglass. And what I call the hourglass is if you just put an hourglass on top of the, the Charlotte MSA where it's fat up at Lake Norman, skinny at downtown, and it fattens out as you get back to Union County, it is the strongest in the, in the hourglass. So, uh, five of the top twenty-selling communities in all the market, age-qualified. Large age-qualified, highly amenitized. So there's Shea Trilogy near Lake Norman. You've got Lenar Treetops, which is a south-side community. It's over in the Indianland area. You've got Colter Crest Winds in the Mint Hill area, Lenar Imagery, which is on Mountain Island Lake, and Pulte, Carolina Orchards, which is Fort Mill. So out of those five, two of them are on the south side, and they're winding down. They're getting ready to close out. So, uh, when we commissioned Strategic Insights to do this study, we wanted to know, and we were looking at Dillon-Harrisburg at the same time. We just, you know, where's the best place? And two eight one seven three is the number one zip code out of a hundred and eighteen zip codes in the entire Charlotte area for age-qualified. And the reasons is, you know, where are they today? Um, there are seventy-four hundred households in this zip code. And, uh, where are their grandkids? Cause that's the biggest dri- you know, that's one of the biggest reasons why people are moving here. And this is the number three most popular zip code for families, thirty-five to fifty-four, earning more than a hundred thousand.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Did you happen to work with the town of Waxall on the Main Street research that they did and the demographics that came out?
I, I am not familiar with that. I, I haven't.
You might wanna just check with, uh, the town manager on the, uh, Main Street demographic study that they did about three years ago.
Okay.
It's amazing what you're gonna find out.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Well, in essence, it's the number one place for families to raise kids, which backs the grandparents coming down.
Yeah.
And it's also the second-best place to live for safety in the state of North Carolina. Jan Ringling's back there going, yay, yay, yay. But no, it's very interesting research if you take a li- we paid a lot of money for that. I sat on the Main Street Committee, I chaired it.
Okay.
I think it would help you.
Dig into that, and we'll-
Don't take me wrong, but I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for it or anything like that. I'm thinking it, it just substantiates what you've got here with a different study that the town happened to do, blends together.
I will certainly, uh, get in touch with Jeff Wells and Waxall and get a copy of that. The, the third reason, uh, uh, two eight one seven three is the number one, uh, zip code is because the fifty-five and over home buyers looking at three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand up, so anything above three hundred thousand, two eight one seven three is the number one zip code for that transaction for fifty-five and over. And I'm just gonna, I'll hit these slides really quick. Um, this is a slide that demonstrates, uh, the seventy-four hundred households in the MSA, and it's a heat map. So the darker the, the area, the more, uh, fifty-five and over households you have. Uh, and what's interesting is that, you know, while the zip code is seventeenth in MSA for what the count is today, it's growing at a three-point-eight-five percent growth rate, which is number seven. So it's growing. And it's, it's growing for some of the obvious reasons, but, you know, the explosive growth that you guys have seen over the last twenty years for the quality of life and for the great schools, um, you know, I'm an example of that. Uh, you know, they're here, and as the kids are aging out and going to college and moving out, they're empty nesters now, and they're here. And they want to right-size their lifestyle. They're tired of the acre lot and mowing the yard all weekend long. They're tired of the, you know, forty-eight hundred, five thousand square feet, so they're looking to right-size, so that, so they're already here. And I thought, I thought it was interesting that, um, when we, when we ran a little bit of, uh, market information, the inventory level for ranch and master-down homes and the zip code is at a critical level. And this is just resales. It's at, uh, two-point-three-month supply. There are only forty-five listings on MLS today when I ran that. Um, here's a slide that demonstrates where are the grandkids. Um, and the, the darker the green, it kinda shows you the, uh, hundred thousand and over, uh, income for the, the family thirty-five to fifty years old. These grandparents are chasing their successful children. Successful children have stable jobs, and they're more likely to stay put, so that's why they're coming here. And this is a heat map showing where the fifty-five and over home buyer is buying that three to five hundred. That's on the left, and then the five hundred and up. And I think you can kinda see the hourglass effect on both of these maps where you've got a little bit on the north and a little bit on the south, but for the, I think what is, what is really interesting is that five hundred and over price point, you've got a little bit of activity, uh, driven by the, the lake on the north side, and then you've got, uh, the activity here. And I mean, it, I mean, it's a substantial margin that this zip code is ahead of the next closest one, and it's actually Morseville. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Walter, but after he gets finished, uh, I'll definitely be here for questions and answers.
Thank you.
Left click, say thanks for sliding. Alright. I heard you just hit the, hit the down button. Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Walter Fields. Um, I'm, uh, forty-seven years a city planner, um, uh, twenty-five years in public service, including twenty years in Charlotte, and then twenty-two years now, um, as a consulting planner for small communities, and, and I work with developers. And, um, David Weekly and I have done six, seven, eight, um, similar projects. Many of those are more urban infill projects in Charlotte. Um, and for the record, my address is nineteen nineteen South Boulevard, Suite one oh one in Charlotte. Um, and, and I'll just sort of pick up where Shannon left off, and thank you again for the opportunity. We've having, we've been having conversations with the county planning staff literally for months and months and months and months before we even made the decision to file the application. We also had at least three meetings that I attended, um, with the town of Waxall, their planning director, city engineer, and I think the mayor said in on a couple. So we have been in communication with them from the very beginning because we knew they would have an interest in this, in this project. And so we finally, in, at the end of January of this year, filed the application, um, that you're reviewing tonight. I will mention in the, the, uh, Lee mentioned about three meetings. We, we understand, and as a city planner, I'm a great believer in going out into the community and talking about things, and we knew there would be a lot of interest in this project. Um, and so we were, um, Lee was kind enough to provide us the mailing list that we would need to have for our community meeting notice way back in, uh, October. And we had our first community meeting up at Forest Hills Church on November the twentieth. Now, it was an informal meeting, and we, and we announced it that way. Um, at that meeting, we had thirty-three people to sign our sign-in sheets. I think there were probably more people there than that cause there were some folks sort of floating in and floating out. Um, but we got an earful. We got lots of questions that we could answer that night. We also got a series of questions that we couldn't answer that night. And so we went to work to try to see how many of those we could resolve. We had a second informal community meeting at Forest Hills, um, in January on the fifteenth, and at that meeting, only twelve people came. I don't know if that means we did such a good job at the first one or not, but that's how many came to the second one. And when we had our virtual meeting, which was our official community meeting, um, on the twenty-sixth last month, um, electronically, it appeared there were twenty-six or twenty-seven people attended that meeting. We don't, we took out and accounted for our team members who were on that meeting. So we've had, you know, sixty or so people collectively in these three meetings that have participated with us and given us ideas and, and asked us questions. And so we're, we, we, we would like to think that the fact there doesn't appear to be a large crowd here in the room tonight suggests that we've done a good job in addressing people's concerns and, and, and responding with changes to the plan and so on and so forth. Um, let me see if I can make this work. I'm not a tech guy. Nope, that wasn't it. Scroll down. Whoop, got ahead of me. I'm sorry. This is just an area map. Uh, it's similar to the one that Lee had in his presentation. I won't take any time dwelling on it, but it shows you in the lighter green the shape of this property, and it shows our proximity, uh, with the Lawson community, um, which is in the town of Waxall. And so they fall under Waxall's zoning and, and other municipal services. Um, the original site plan, um, that we had for our project. Oops, that's not it. I still draw a mess with crayons and pens. This, this high-tech stuff is, is, uh, I'm going the wrong way. Um, this shows you our original site plan that we had started our conversations with the community, um, and one that we eventually ended up filing with a few modifications. This, this is Cuthbertson Road going right through the center here, and over at the upper left is, um, NC sixteen. So that sort of gives you a grounding in where we are. This was the original plan. We still had some details to work out. And we responded to some questions that came up, um, at the community meetings. And as we went along, we added more and more and more to this plan, um, to respond to, um, questions that people had and ideas that people had. This is the plan as it appears today. The area in the center of the site plan here is highlighted because that's an area where we made some significant changes in the lot pattern and the street pattern. Um, and what you can't see on this plan is along Cuthbertson Road, we're committing to a pretty significant streetscape plan, which I'll show you in just a moment. Um, and we're also making other improvements to Cuthbertson Road, which I'll cover shortly. I'd like to call your attention to the circled areas, number one right here, number two right here, and number three right here. Um, those are the points of our site plan. We are the, where we are the closest to an adjoining existing home. And in a little while, I'm gonna show you the buffers that we have at those closest points. Um, and that information was put on the plan in resp- in response to questions from the community about what sort of buffers are we gonna have and, and how will your new homes relate to our homes. There were questions about the amenity center. Um, lots of folks wanted to find out if they could join, you know, come to the pool, this, that, and the other. We had a suggestion that it be covered and open year-round, and, um, as, as the process has evolved, this is the amenity center that has evolved in the community, um, with a pool and um, recreational courts, open spaces, fire pits, the things of, of that nature that the residents of this neighborhood would, would expect to have. Um, this is sort of an outline, sort of a two-dimensional black line drawing of what we think the clubhouse is gonna look like. Um, the architecture of this building will tie in to the architecture, um, of the homes, both the townhomes and the single-family homes that will populate the community. And just to give you a sense, um, we've got exercise rooms and, and, and workout rooms and meeting rooms and large gathering spaces, um, within this, and it's about five thousand square feet, Shannon, I think, available to the residents of the community. One of the things that we heard from the community is that we really wanted some identity to create something along Cuthbertson Road. It's not just a driveway and a bunch of mailboxes. And so the, the part of our plan and the commitment through this plan is to do a streetscape along the length of Cuthbertson Road that adjoins our site, which includes sidewalks on both sides, landscaping, um, and I'll show you a, a little bit of a detail here. This would be if you're sitting, um, at this intersection right here, you're standing right here looking out towards Cuthbertson Road. Uh, this is what you'd see. Um, that, that cross-section there, the actual right-of-way in that cross-section is yet to be determined because the turn lanes that go in will push the right-of-way out. But just the landscaped area from the back of the sidewalk to the first property line on both sides of the road is forty feet. And so within that forty feet will be landscaping, birmingham, tree planting, things of that nature. In response to the request of the neighbors, let's create something special along this corridor. And so we've, we've, we've put that in place, and that's a commitment as part of the plan. Uh, both Waxall, um, and your staff and the neighbors were very interested in trails and where other pedestrian amenities. And let me just walk you through this drawing. The dark blue dotted line you see at the bottom of the plan is the area that is, would be set aside for a future Carolina Thread Trail. Um, and if y'all have specific questions about that, I'm gonna defer to Shannon because he's had more communications with the folks at Carolina Thread Trail and the, and the Land Conservancy about what they'd be looking for and how we would do it. But this is the area that seems to meet their expectations about how to connect. I will tell you that at our community meetings, when we talked about that, there was some concern in the Lawson community. They, they saw the benefit of having this trail nearby, but their open space network is laid out in such a way that the only way you could get from this trail into their community is to go down very narrow, open-space corridors between people's houses. And so we're not in a position to say where the tr- where this thread trail will go once it leaves our property. Um, and again, a lot of the Lawson folks wanted to figure out how they could benefit from it, but just as many were concerned that they weren't exactly sure how that would work in their community, and without anybody being able to answer that question, it sort of was a fifty-fifty deal. But in addition to that, the, the, the light green, um, dotted lines are also public facilities which will be available that link the Carolina Thread Trail through our community out to the public sidewalks along Cuthbertson Road, and then across on the other side of Cuthbertson Road. And so in addition to the sort of a regional connection, we have the local connections to our community and out to the public street that over time, as the street is planned to be widened according to the land use plan, the transportation plan, sidewalks will be constructed, um, on both sides of our site, connecting these communities and these public and institutional facilities that will develop over time along Cuthbertson Road. So we think we've done, um, a good job in trying to address, um, that whole question, both in terms of the local impact as well as being a regional partner and the town of Waxall's expectations as you saw in their comment, um, about the Carolina Thread Trail. Now, um, the next slide gives, these are representations of the sorts of architecture, scale and character of buildings that you might expect to see on the single-family portion of this community. These houses would range in size from sixteen hundred square feet to, say, twenty-eight hundred square feet. They're story and story and a half. There's not a plan for any two-story dwellings in this community. Um, each one has a two-car garage, and each one has a parking pad out front of that garage sufficient to accommodate, uh, two more cars for, for, for guest parking or folks that might wanna come and visit. Or if you're like me, you have so much stuff in your garage, you have to park out in the driveway. The townhomes that are gonna be proposed, that are proposed for the other side of the street, we're still working on the architecture, but the architecture of the townhomes will pick up the elements, building materials, um, and architectural cues shared by the single-family homes and by the amenity center. So you'll be able to tell that this is all one community, no matter which side of the road, um, that you're on. Now, as I said, we had three community meetings. Y'all forgive me, my throat's just a little scratchy. And we, we collected comments and questions and sort of grouped them into four categories. And, uh, sitting in the chairs that you sit in, you might have seen some of these before, but I just wanna to touch base, um, with them in turn. And I'll, they're in, you know, we, we, there were questions about density and lots of conversations about that. There were questions about what's the impact on the schools. There were questions about traffic as there always are. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there were questions about what are we gonna do around the edges and the, and the buffers. And so, um, sort of starting with density, um, we calculate the existing zoning would theoretically acc- accommodate 217 units, single-family detached homes. That's about 9.2 units per acre. Our development, as it's proposed, would, with the age-restricted homes plus the townhomes, be an overall density of 1.9 units an acre. Now, I've heard that there's always a question about gross versus net. This is the gross density number. If you take out all of the 150 acres of open space that's part of the community, and it's not just all in the floodplain, a lot of it comes up into the neighborhood, that would take us to 2.9, which is essentially the same as the zoning of the Lawson community next door. And it seems to be consistent with your land use plan, which talks about this mixed residential area and slightly higher densities than just normal residential. Taking into account that Cuthbertson Road is shown on the transportation map as an arterial street that would be widened to maybe three lanes in the future, this would seem to be a density that's appropriate for the area, comparable with what's there and consistent with the county's adopted land use plan. The next one was school impacts. And you heard Lee in his report read the schools' report, which identified the schools which serve this area and their current capacity. And we've talked about, well, what does a school system use as a multiplier? You know, how many percent of each age group comes out of a given typical home? Start off with the fact that 354 of these homes have no children. The single-family community being age restricted as it is, would not be expected to have any children as permanent residents. The grandkids come and visit, but they don't live there. The market rate townhomes across the street, as a practical matter, the design of a townhome and the lifestyle of people that want to live in a townhome generates far fewer children per unit than a single-family home would generate. We would guess that a single-family home, unage restricted, would generate at least a half a kid or more that plugs into the system at wherever their age group is. Townhomes probably .2 children per townhome and that would sort of be the outside. So we're not suggesting we know the answer of how many kids will this site generate. We're simply suggesting that by virtue of the fact the vast majority of these homes would have no children at all, that there's a very low impact based on the school system's own report of this proposal on the existing school system and the schools that serve this site.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
You've got Parkwood High. Why do you not include Cuthbertson?
That came from the school system. I don't know how their attendant zones are laid out. I was surprised too with the high school just right down the street, but apparently that's the information that the school system sent in their report.
Can you request that for the board commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was saying, what I'll do is I'll follow up with Don O'Gorman, who's a city planner, just verify that that is correct.
Thank you.
Oh, not just yet. So now, traffic. I've never, in all my years as a city planner, I've never seen a development proposal where that question didn't come up. It always comes up and there's never a satisfactory answer unless everything comes to a complete stop and then at least it's fixed in place. We were commissioned, we were instructed by the county, as it's part of your requirements, to do a traffic study and got Michael on board to do that. The scope of that traffic study is not defined by us. It's defined by the county staff and by NC DOT. In this particular occasion, NC DOT indicated that they didn't think there was, and you will correct me if I say this wrong, they didn't have any interest in reviewing the traffic study. They said that overall impact of this in the big picture was so low, they didn't even want, they didn't want to review the study. But we did send a copy to Waxaw and one of the meetings we had with them was dealing with a series of questions that their town engineer had about the study and they communicated with Michael and they communicated with Bjorn to where everybody had exactly the same information. And in doing a traffic study, the big issue is always the peak hour. I mean, that's where the traffic is worst in the morning and worst in the afternoon. If you take the current by right development, assume it's built, and then apply the standard trip generation number to that and then compare that with our proposal with the total build-out including the age-restricted homes and the townhomes, the traffic actually is less with our proposed development than it would be if the land just built out as it's currently zoned. And again, this is, this is critical in terms of the peak hour because that's when the most people are on the road. And so when these traffic studies are done, that's what everybody focuses on. And if you have any specific questions about the traffic study, then I will invite Michael to come up here and answer them because he's the man who did the study. But I think the bottom line is, worst case, it's the same. Best case, it's actually a little bit better than the land developed with the existing zoning. And the traffic study didn't require, I mean, as an offset to impact, traffic study didn't require the intersection improvements that we're proposing at Newtown and Cuthbertson. It was discussed as a suggestion, it'd be nice if we could get this. And one of the things that David Wiggley wanted to do is because we knew we couldn't have any real positive impact, one way or the other, spending money at Providence Road and Cuthbertson, because if we did, it would likely be all torn out when they redo the intersection anyway, is to go to Cuthbertson, take that suggestion, put that in the plan as a commitment. And so even though not required, it's added into our commitments for this project to help benefit overall traffic flow in the entire area. And as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, a moment ago, people get to this site from both ends, from the Newtown end and the Providence Road end. Now we're back to the last point, which was, well, what about those edges? You remember earlier I showed you the circles on the map, one, two and three? These are the actual cross-sections taken at those points on the map. And as I said, we picked the points where our new structures, based on where the light lines are, where the rear yard requirements are and so on and so forth, would be closest to an adjoining home in the Lawson community. That's two on the south side of Cuthbertson and one on the north side. So I hope that image is clear enough. You can see on the right, the single-family home that's already existing in the Lawson community and on the left, where our closest single-family home to that particular home would be. And the distance between those two is 288 feet. Not quite the length of a football field, but getting in the ballpark. And a significant amount of vegetation that's there will stay there. We have no intention of knocking down trees just for recreation. The most economical tree that you could ever have is the one that you leave in place where it already is. And so these cross-sections were shown to the community as a response to what's it going to be like, what are the edge conditions going to be? And if these are the very closest ones, I think it's fair to say that the rest would be even further away with even more space and more vegetation. The area two on the map, which was a little bit closer to Cuthbertson Road, but also very close to the nearest single-family home in the Lawson community, that one's over the length of a football field. It's the football field and one end zone. It's at 311 feet. And again, you can see the trees that are left on our side of the line. There are trees on the property owner's side of the line, the Lawson community. We're doubtful that they would go take them down so they could get a better view of our site, even though we think it's going to be a beautiful community. So again, at the very closest point, this is over 300 feet. And the last one is across Cuthbertson Road where you have existing single-family home in the Lawson community and these would be townhomes built on that north side of the road. And that turns out to be 232 feet. Again, with the vegetation in place, leaving that vegetation in place to create and take advantage of the natural buffer that's already there. So we believe we have responded to the four principal concerns that we heard from the community. We had a very interesting virtual meeting the other night and we actually were almost carrying on a conversation back and forth as the meeting progressed. Several good questions, but I think, again, I'd like to think that the fact that there's not a mob here with signs and torches tonight would suggest that we tried to do a really good job of reaching out early and often. And we hope that you agree with the planning staff that this is consistent with the land use plan, takes advantage of the outlined issues for the thoroughfare plan that actually calls for a pathway to be on Cuthbertson Road. We're putting in five-foot sidewalks on both sides of Cuthbertson Road. So I'll stop talking at this point. We've been going now about an hour and I will see what, if any, questions you might have for me or for Shannon or for any of the rest of our team. Thank you very much.
Point to make, you must have done a good job because I think all of us here get one to two, three, four emails about a case we're going to hear. To my knowledge, I'm the only one that got an email. Did you get one?
Was it good? Was it good? The email?
Well, I don't know if you'd call it good or not, but you know, it's just an email. I guess one of the things I've got about this Carolina Thread Trail...
Yes, sir.
Is, how are you going to make that join north and south? And what can you do to get yours built and not just put the land aside, but have it there ready to go?
Let me ask Shannon to come up and take that question. He's had more in-depth conversations with the Thread Trail folks and understands their desires and needs and I'd rather have him address that because I think it'd give you a better answer.
Before you sit down, on the sidewalk issue...
Yes, sir.
For any way you could get that up to the dentist offices would be good. People are walking that area a lot, they're riding bicycles. If you could put, figure out how to get a bicycle lane next to the sidewalk some way, somehow, I think it'd be very, very beneficial to your plans to make this a first-class operation.
Well, we've got, on each side of the road, as I mentioned, we've got 40 feet to work with outside of the pavement edge and behind the sidewalk. So I think it's something we can take a look at.
Just to ask you to take a look at it.
Yeah, well, I think that...
And visit with Lee and him on it and get some serious thinking on it, okay?
Yeah, and it's, the question would be, is it just widening the pavement to add a bike lane on the pavement or completely removing the bicyclists from the road, which is where they really are supposed to be? But I hear you and we'll take a look at it.
If a bicyclist is riding Cuthbertson, I hope there's an ambulance standing by. So anyway, thank you for your time, sir.
Well, thank you for your questions.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Okay?
Got a question.
Well, Shannon is here to respond to your question about the Thread Trail.
I'll be brief. I'm going to back this up so that we could look at the slide that's got a demonstration of, here we go. So in working with McAdams and the consultant with Carolina Thread Trail, we've talked a lot about this southern, let's call it east-to-west connector. While we're sensitive to what type of planning we're going to be doing for this open space that's in the floodplain, we, you know, wanted to make sure we understood what exactly Carolina Thread Trail needed. Is it a 10-foot wide asphalt path with easements on either side? Is it, can it be a gravel path? Can it be something else? And there's actually a lot of, you know, it's kind of, there's a lot of flexibility and not, there wasn't really a right answer. Carolina Thread Trail basically said, yeah, we kind of, you know, take what the developers can donate to us. And so we stopped it there and we said, well, what if we have the farmer continue some type of operations with some of this open space and we don't want an asphalt path that's going to get torn up by a tractor that's going over it? I said, if we're flexible there, it could be a gravel path. I said, okay. I said, what if we can give you another easement over our sidewalk infrastructure through the community to get you to Cuthbertson to where we could be on the improved Cuthbertson right-of-way? Said, they'd be open with that. So that's why we're in front of you tonight with two basically easements available to Carolina Thread Trail. One that we build, you know, in the community and the other is the east-west connection that, you know, we're open to how wide it is. We just need some more input from them. We hope to handle that during our engineering process with McAdams.
Well, I hope you can get it done because right now, go out and try to ask for money, nonprofits to donate and foundations and things like that, it's drying up.
Yeah.
And if you're going to do it, then do it right, this is not criticism, do it right for the purchasers of this property. It's going to be buying these houses and apartments, make it first class. Just ask you to think about that.
Got you.
Okay?
You had a comment about being able to get to the dentist office up at Cuthbertson and Providence. So we've worked with staff here in the county about some type of, on the north side, some type of walking trail that gets you away from that bridge because that bridge is not wide enough for us to put any sidewalks or anything on. So what we're thinking on the north side is that we're going to go around it. And on our property, we could build the trail and on the adjacent property, we're working with that property owner to secure pedestrian easements to have the ability to, when that improvement is made by somebody on that bridge, pedestrian bridge, to get across the creek that you come up to Cuthbertson Road where there's, inside that right-of-way, there's sidewalk infrastructure so that people can get, you know, I don't know if that adjacent property is going to be commercial or if it's another use, but at least get to the existing commercial node that's at Providence now.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If you secure that pedestrian easement on the adjacent parcel, who provides funding for the bridge?
That's a great question and we're open to discuss it, but we were not planning on building the pedestrian bridge over the creek.
Could be a great opportunity for public private.
Question on the townhomes. How many bedrooms are we looking at for these townhomes and what's the approximate target cost or not cost, market price?
The last one's an easy answer. It's as much as we can get.
Understood.
But in all seriousness, we're probably looking at, from a bedroom count, three bedrooms, two-story, front-load townhome, three bedrooms. The only two-bedroom townhomes we're going to do is really close to downtown Charlotte and this is one where, you know, we're probably in that 1,700 to 2,100 square foot range and ballpark for starting price, it's somewhere in the low to mid threes is where it would be starting.
Okay, now, three bedrooms, I noticed on some of the elevations, I was saying, single-load garage would, do you have single-load garage on the three-bedroom units?
No, sir. No, sir. It'd be a two-car garage. So that elevation is something that's in the process that we're working with our design team to finalize.
Regarding the land in the floodplain and the floodway, can that be developed in any way with any type of structure? Any type of, I guess, dwelling or amenity occupied structure or is it pretty much just useless as far as from a development perspective?
It's, we can't put structures in it, but I wouldn't consider it useless from a development perspective just because some of the improvements we can put as part of a common open space improvement with trails and maybe some non-heated square foot and some type of benches, some type of outdoor living areas, that's something that we could do in those areas. And I think our residents will appreciate the use of that property.
So given the actual buildable area, is that what this density of 2.9 units is?
Yes, sir. I think the buildable area is around 85 acres and I think the open space is around 150 acres.
Okay, my map just isn't working out with that for some reason. You said 85 is buildable?
85 is buildable.
So where does this 2.9 come in? That's what approximately... 255-ish houses for the 85... Two-hundred-and-fifty-five-ish houses for the eighty-five buildable had a two-point-nine?
Eddie, am I doing the numbers right here? I'm going off the data table on the plan.
My name's Eddie Moore with McAdams, three-four-three-zero, Torrenden Way, Suite 110 in Charlotte. The area that's both the floodplain and the floodway is approximately fifty-six percent of the site. So in calculating the net density, that area is taken out.
How many acres is that? That's built, how many acres is buildable?
Buildable, well, we can, if we take out the hundred-and-four out of the two-hundred-and-thirty-five, that balance. That, that will be the area that's outside of the floodplain and floodway.
And we have open space as an element in the site design that, that is buildable area.
Yes.
We just choose to use it as open space to link the portions of the community together. So a different plan might use some of that open space to accommodate heated area. So there's a, a difference between how much land is in the floodplain, subject to floodplain restrictions. And how much total open space we have, which includes that, all that floodplain and floodway land. And the other open spaces that we have, sort of laced through the site. That might be where the difference in the number comes.
Yes.
I guess what I'm looking at is three-point-four-four, uh, units per buildable acre, when you take the floodplain and everything. This is occupied, uh, space where you could actually put a, a resident in.
Well, obviously, we can't put, this plan limits both the location and number of residential units that can be built on this property. This is not a maxed-out plan. This is not, how many units can we get on the high ground? This is a plan that's designed to integrate in with the existing community, with Lawson next door, the expectations of the Town of Waxaw, and with your adopted plan. This is, this is not maxed-out, in the theoretical sense, by any means. We designed this to be compatible with our neighbors, large and small. And I'm, and if the math, I'm, I'm not the math guy, so.
We, we've double-checked the numbers, because sixty-four percent of the site is open space. So it's just not the fifty-six percent that's in the floodplain. We have other areas that are incorporated inside of the development, like Walter was saying, that comes out to the, to the net density of two-point-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question for Lee. I know that there's a bunch of talk about age-targeted, age-restricted. In the county right now, do you know approximately how many age-targeted or age-restricted sites have been approved for zoning but not built yet?
In the unincorporated portion of Union County, we have Crest Winds, which was about six-hundred-and-fifteen or so lots. We have a small portion of courtyards at Lawyer's, which was, I think the county portion of that was about fourteen lots. The vast majority of it was in the town Stallings. We have a, not necessarily age-restricted, single-family homes. But at the corner of Beulah and Waxaw Indian Trail, there was an age-restricted-
Twin Lakes.
Uh, twi-, yeah, Twin Lake Senior Living Center.
Twin Lakes.
Uh, that was a hundred-and-eighty-something units, I believe. One-eight-six, yeah.
And then, uh, do you know approximately how many were age-targeted?
We don't really track the age-targeted, because they're, they, they are, they can still be sold as market rate. But, but there, there were a number of neighborhoods that did, I, I guess during their presentations, talk about doing either a mix of age-targeted, or is all age-targeted? So, so we did have a few.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Age-restricted, age-targeted seems to be big buzzwords. So every sign I see driving around the county, I see age-targeted, age-restricted, senior living, things of that nature. And that's, that seems to be the big buzzword. So I know there is demand, but I, I also see there's considerable supply. If it's not available, it sure is coming. Thank you.
Okay, does any of the board members have any more questions of the applicant?
Is that gonna be covenant-restricted, uh, at fifty-five and over?
Let me, let me get Shannon to come and answer that question. I just wanted to clarify that.
About the state eighty-twenty.
Right, and, and I understand that that, those terms get sort of thrown around like they're interchangeable, but they're not, and not. And we want to be really clear about that.
Right.
So our, our CCNRs for, for an encore community is more restrictive than the eighty-twenty rule. Our, our restriction will be that all buyers will have to have at least one person, fifty-five or better, in the home. Now, the twenty percent flexibility, that does give us the ability if someone has a spouse that's under fifty-five and say they were to pass, the spouse doesn't have to move out. You know, that's, that's the last thing that we want to do. And the CCNRs, we also have restrictions on the minimum age for an occupant. And that is to keep young kids, you know, school-aged children out. And there's also, we also have some CCNRs recently, thanks to our Raleigh project called Briar Chapel, where we have to address the boomerang kids. You know, the kids that go off to college and then come back. And so we, we limit the amount of time that someone under twenty-five could actually visit.
That's when you change locks.
Well, yeah, change, change, change your number, change your locks. But that's, that's a long answer for our CCNRs would be more restrictive than the Federal Fair Housing Act.
So that's at the discretion of the HOA to enforce, correct?
Yes.
And at what point does the HOA get turned over from the developer to the, the residents themselves? What percentage of occupancy?
A hundred percent.
So at twenty-five, they get kicked to the curb.
Well, you can, you can, you can come visit for a short time, but you have to leave.
The human species is the only one where once the children leave the nest, they can come back. Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate you very much.
Okay, with that, since there's no public comments, we'll close that. And, uh, any more discussion amongst the board members about this?
Yeah, I'd like to just make, make a mention on this. This age restriction is really a quite a good deal. You look at this development, it's, it's designed, if you got, you know, who would wanna bring a kid there? What kid would wanna live there, a bunch, among a bunch of old people? So it's, it's, it's gonna take, it's gonna take the, the stress off of the school system immediately. It's gonna take the stress off, or some stress off of the police. It'll take a traffic stress out as well, because I, I used to be retired and not working for a few years. And you tend to, I'm not going to be rushing out of traffic, you go after, after traffic, come back home before it starts up again in the evening. So, so the, the old fifty-five people who are living there, who are actually retired, are not gonna be a burden on traffic, even though they will go, go places. And, and let's face it, you know, I've, I've been living in, in this county since two thousand. It's gonna grow to get more houses here. This is about as good a deal, I think, as you can come up with. Or, or also, one other consideration, you have, these, 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 these homes are, are, you know, as you push, you're pushing half a million dollars. You got, you got older people, and they're gonna be getting maids, and they're gonna be getting yard service, and they're gonna be creating jobs, and spreading the wealth into the neighborhood, which I think is a good, into the county, which I think is a good deal. So I would recommend it.
Those jobs, those additional jobs might create additional traffic?
Say it again?
You don't think those additional jobs might create additional traffic?
They might be, but, but, but some, when somebody's got millions of money paying taxes, that's the kind of people that wanna live in this county.
You figure the more, the more of these they put up, the more you got traffic coming out in the middle of the day.
And the other one, yeah, we, we can't be breaking legs and cut, because, and, and cutting people's tires up.
I agree with-
People are gonna go as they see fit. Yeah, but, 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 uh, Sandy is this will, will take, break off of traffic in the rush hour period, because people are not gonna be commuting to that job.
It's gonna be creating another rush hour.
I think what you gotta do is look at the recommendation that the Town of Waxaw made. Uh, I think it was three or four bullet points of the police department. And there's some, like, high concerns there, and, and also, we've got, that needs to be taken, ask y'all to take that into consideration with the other aspects of the Town of Waxaw. Which I know you will, because you, you said you will. Any other?
Fifty percent of Union County is still agricultural. Fifty percent. That means you still have all these tractor roads, you got farm roads. And you're putting these things in, putting a, no, a thousand cars on the road, on tra-, on farm roads.
And what do you recommend we do? Say, you can't come, you can't come live here?
No, I'm just saying, wait until the infrastructure gets a little better.
So you can't come here until we fix the infrastructure, infrastructure?
Well, if, if DOT got their stuff together, you would have-
There is, there is no such thing as rush hour on Providence Road. It's a constant thing. It's either daytime, and you're, you're wide open, or it's, it's late at night, and, and it might drop off some. Providence is a nightmare, and, and if we're relying on the NC DOT to do right, right by the people and make this work, I think we're gonna be waiting here for quite a while.
Probably the rest of your lives. I moved here in nineteen-seventy into, into Charlotte. In two thousand, oh, God, I just can't stand this traffic, and I moved to Stallings. Two years ago, I said, God, I can't stand this traffic, and I moved to Monroe. Now, now, you know, that's, that's, you have growth, people, people have got to live someplace, they gotta be where the jobs are. We, we, we try to create factories, we try to create opportunities, we try to educate people and say, well, gee, my company's staying here and going to work and building houses. Well, that's because that's what you do in civilizations. I don't, you know, I don't see how, how we go back to a rural community, a little, like, a little small town and tell, but you guys gotta go.
I agree, you're, you're not gonna go back. I, I think what we-
Yeah, I may want to, but you can't.
I agree. And, but I think we have a responsibility to the citizens to control growth, especially along the corridors where, not where you anticipate growth, but where you've already got such an immense problem with traffic. Now, I think they've got a great facility, I, I think their buffers are, are great, I think the amenities are nice, I love how it ties into the trails. I think it's gonna be a quality product. I have traffic in here, I don't know if this is the time for the density.
If, if we deny this one, what do you think will happen to the next one? Well, you, you think, say, well, in that case, gee, let, let, let me go somewhere near Wade's Bro. And so, so the board will be happy, and then nobody, but nobody will buy the house. They, they choose this place, this area, because this is where people wanna live.
I agree, I think the density might be a little much, just given the traffic count. I think there's some things that aren't worked out yet regarding the trails that potentially could be part of an approval. Some deals that could be worked out there. I also think we do owe it to the Waxaw Police Department to address their concerns.
Okay, any other comments? At this time, I need to ask for a motion from the board. Do we have any motion, either to approve or deny, or what's the feelings of the members of the board?
I'm going to approve.
The motion's been made to approve. Any discussion? All those that are in favor of approving, raise your right hand. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Did you get that?
No, I didn't see it.
Four to two.
Four to two, thank you.
Okay, uh, Lee, do you wanna come back up and tell us the next step for the applicant?
Yes, sir. So again, this will generally follow the same process as the last one. Board of Commissioners, public hearing on July sixth, and likely a decision on July twentieth.
Any questions for Lee? Thank you, Lee, appreciate that. With that, this case is closed. Thank you to all the applicants and visitors that came tonight.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels going home. Okay?
Thank you.
Next item that we're gonna continue with is the planning staff, or, excuse me, number eight. Amendments to the Article sixty-five flood damage prevention.
Thanks, Lee.
Leave all you have this in your agenda packets?
Yeah.
Okay. This was a, we, we're gonna be bringing forward a lot of text changes over the next few months. A lot, mainly due to some changes in state, state law. They, they rewrote the planning statutes, they consolidated city and county planning statutes together into one bill. Made some minor tweaks to some things, and that's called the one-sixtyD package. So you'll, you'll be seeing that in, in a little while. It's a huge, huge undertaking. Our legal department's reviewing it right now to make sure we didn't miss anything. Jim, who just stepped out, took a lot of his time while he was working from home during COVID-nineteen, and knocked most of those revisions out for us. He did a good job. This is one that's not related to, to that, so we kinda wanted to bring that to you separately. We didn't wanna confuse those issues with ones that were required by the state and ones that, that, that are sort of staff-initiated. So this is a, what, what, what I guess staff feels, we, our, our stormwater engineer, floodplain administrator kinda drafted these. And we feel they're, they're pretty straightforward amendments to the floodplain section. There, there are several properties around the county that are, may, some, a lot of them are commercial in nature, that can't be developed. They, they can be, but they can't be, because they can't meet their, their parking requirements on the site, because they have floodplain. And that floodplain rule that the county has was adopted, I think, back in two thousand and six originally. Prior to two thousand and six, the county had what we call minimum standard floodplain rules. Basically, we followed the federal government's minimum guidelines that FEMA sets. So for example, I'll, I'll, let me bring up a map, just to, so you guys can see what I'm referring to, different areas on a, on a floodplain. So I'm just gonna zoom in on a random location. It's not random, I just, I happen to know that there's a large floodplain there.
Is it the last subject property?
I'm sorry, uh, no, this is, this is actually behind my old neighborhood, that's why I know there's a big floodplain back there. So, so, so this is a standard, what we call an AE zone. AE zones, this hatched area is called the floodway, and these areas along the side that you see in blue are the flood, flood fringe. And those areas, those gray areas are shaded zone X, zone X areas, which are five-hundred-year floodplains. Prior to two thousand and six, we have minimum standard rules, and actually, most of the towns in Union County still have these rules. You could fill up to the edge of this floodway to raise that land above base flood elevation and build houses on it, or commercial structures or, or whatever. You could not fill in the floodway. The only thing you could do in the floodway is cross or utilities, a few things you can do. Any increases that came about from that required a, a conditional letter of map provision through FEMA, and then a, a letter of map provision. Which basically, one comes before the construction's done, and one comes after the construction's finished. In two thousand and six, the county decided it was gonna have a, probably one of the more strict floodplain standards in the state. And we basically decided to treat floodway, or the flood fringe, like the floodway. Basically, you can't build anything in any of the floodplain. You, you just can't touch it. There, there were some exceptions. So in two thousand and eight, the ordinance that, this section of the ordinance that you see in front of you was, was adopted. So that kind of tweaked the rules just a little bit, because we saw a need to be able to do some type of things. Essential services such as water sewer lines, road crossings, you, you have to do those things. Water sewer li-, or sewer lines especially. Gravity lines follow creeks, because that's how you're gonna get your best fall to get to the sewer treatment plant. Trails, greenways, things like that. Recreational facilities, we, we decided to, to, to allow those. Recently, again, we've seen several developments that have come in, talked to us about doing developments, and it really, it was kinda hard for them to work around some of those floodplain issues. And this, this isn't one of the properties, but- And this, this isn't one of the properties, but, um, this, I just saw it looking on here. This would be a good example. Something like this, where a good portion of the property is in the floodplain, got some developable area out, but maybe there needs to be a parking area, um, and, and maybe they could put that parking area in the floodplain. So we talked to them with our stormwater engineer, floodplain administrator, about if that's something that, that the county could do, or should do. Um, and he, he kind of took a look at it, and he, he came up with the language you see here, so that you can have, um, parking can be permitted with the flood, within the floodplain, uh, provided that the, the floodway is identified, given that the following conditions are met. Um, and that the, so, condition number one is that the grade of the parking area within the floodplain must be at or below the existing grade of the development, and it cannot require the addition of fill. So you can't put any fill material in that floodplain. So you basically have to just level, lay it flat. So what flooded before still has to flood. It's just, instead of flooding grass, it's, it's, it'd be a parking area. Number two was the parking place, um, within the floodplain must be required by the ordinance for the associated use, and cannot equate to more than fifty percent of the total proposed parking for the development. So the idea there is that you're not gonna fit a whole bunch of buildings on the, on the buildable side and put all your parking in the floodplain. So it would require a minimal amount of parking in that flood area. So you're only gonna get fifty percent of the required parking. Um, it also has to be required parking. So overflow can't go in there either. Um, so you can't get any of your, um, because we see generally that, um, that most commercial developers actually usually want more parking than what, what we say you have to have. Um, so any of your overflow that they want above and beyond what the county requires cannot be there. Um, and then, the last thing was, measures shall be provided on the project site to identify the parking, um, within the floodplain as parking within a floodplain. So basically, like a sign. So you know that if you're pulling into that parking area, you're in a floodplain. So on the off chance that maybe somebody parks a car there overnight, and a flood comes and your car gets damaged, then you have awareness that you've parked in the floodplain.
Have we checked with council to see if that would be enough to protect the county from liability?
Um, that's a, uh, uh, again, we, the county goes above and beyond currently in our, in our ordinance by not allowing parking in the floodplain. Many communities do. So it's a, it's an allowed use in, in, in most communities. And that's why we put that in there, um, not necessarily to protect the county, but to protect the property owners. So if you do have a development that, um, wants to utilize this proposed rule, um, they would be protected. Just so there's awareness that somebody parking in that area knew that they were in the flood, floodplain area.
So legal has signed off, because, you know, I've, I've run into things in, in professional world where you could have signs up and you could still lose a case.
So, so, so typically how we route, um, the, the text amendments is we bring them to, to the planning board for you to kind of say whether you think they're a good idea, idea or not. And then if, if, if you do, then we, we take it to legal, make sure they're okay with it, and then ultimately it'll go to the board of county commissioners.
Can these parking, parking spaces, are, they're paved? They can be paved?
Yes.
So you're adding an, an impervious surface to a floodplain?
Yes, sir.
That's right. So you could potentially make it worse, if you have a lot of these parking spaces in that floodplain?
Um, you could be adding, um, im- impervious surface. Yes, sir, you could. Um, I know that from talking to our stormwater engineer, when he, um, when he looks at, at, at flood models, and again, I'm not, I'm not the expert on, on floodplains, but when, when he reviews those models, there's a coefficient that has to be used to be plugged in based on what that, what the ground cover is. So, for example, a, a forest is gonna have a higher coefficient, or a lower coefficient, or vice versa, than, than asphalt or pavement. Uh, because runoff is obviously gonna be higher off of pavement than it will off of forests, because you got more, um, area for that, um, brain runoff to soak into. So, so, uh, whether it makes it worse or not, I, I can't really answer that question. We've, we've had him look at this, and he thought this was an appropriate amendment to the ordinance, to have a minimum amount of parking in the floodplain. Um, you would have to do a flood study. I mean, that, that's, that's a, that's a requirement. So if you do this, you have to do a flood study. If you're increasing, um, uh, flooding on adjacent properties, that has to, you either have to do a clomar or lomar, or you can't do it. Um, and that, clomars and lomars are subject to FEMA approval. So I, it probably doesn't fully answer your question, but like I said, we vetted it through our stormwater engineer, and he thought a minimum amount of parking in the floodplain was, was probably an appropriate thing.
So you, you, you're saying, the county says you can't park in a floodplain, but you're saying the communities say you can?
Oh, yes. There, there are, there are plenty of communities. Again, minimum standards that FEMA has will allow fill to be placed up to the edge of a floodway. So if you wanna, like, if, if this person, and again, this may not be true on this particular piece of property, because I don't, I'm not looking at jurisdiction, but if this were in one of those communities, they would allow fill to be placed in this blue area outside the hatch. Those are minimum FEMA standards. That's, and, and the way that floodway.
Didn't you have to get a permit or something to do that, though?
Yes. Yes, there's a flood development permit that will be required, but it's a locally issued permit.
Makes no sense.
Um, the, the, the way the floodways are determined is that, that's, that's what they, that, that's how they're determined. So FEMA looks, or actually, in, in this case, the state of North Carolina, when they do the models, they look at, you know, what would happen if this area were filled, and this area were filled, and that's actually how they come up with that floodway. That's, that's how it's determined.
So what do you want us to do with, with these?
Um, just make a recommendation. If you, if you think it's a good idea, then that's fine. If, if you don't, then, then that's fine, too. We just.
What uses, just so I'm clear, what uses exactly would this be? Would this be commercial, residential?
It, it would affect both. It would be primarily commercial uses, but it would affect both.
Will the flood engineer present this to the, uh, uh, board of commissioners, or you?
Um, we would prob, we would have him there to answer detailed questions. And, and if you would feel more comfortable with him coming back to the planning board, that, that's perfectly fine. This is not, um, you don't have to make a recommendation on it. It's not, this is, it's not, this isn't a, a developer-initiated text change, so I have no problem, you know, punting for a month if, if you want him to come and talk to you.
What's the wish of the board?
I'd like him to come talk to us, and, uh, and furthermore, I'm gonna be very honest. I, I know that fifty percent is an arbitrary figure. I would be, if it were something that was a marginal issue with a commercial institution, they had to have twenty percent more parking, you know, I'd be willing to go along with that, but fifty percent, I mean, you put fifty percent of Walmart's parking lot in a floodplain, and you have got a big area in the floodplain. And see, it doesn't differentiate. That parking lot is a parking lot. Size is absolutely immaterial here.
That's a good point.
I agree. And you could have a school, like a college, CDs, Althea, so say classes in session. You're maxed out anyways. You have a flood, and fifty percent of your cars are underwater. That's a problem. They got no place to move.
Okay, would you ever come back?
Uh, well, I was, I was to give a little thought of my own. Uh, we sat here, we just had a, a, a four to two, uh, four to two vote, uh, on, on, on the issue, because, because of density. Well, this floodplain, why in the world are we saying, yeah, you can develop that thing, too, with, make, put something on one thing or the other? We got a problem with density. I'll, I'll admit that, okay? Why don't we just say, no, you can't do it. Leave the floodplain where it is. It's, 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 it's a floodplain. And you, you could put out, pull a couple less houses up. You're breaking my heart. Uh, and that, that should, that should help solve some of our problems. Uh, there's, you know, uh, I, uh, and, and again, I, we hear stuff about, you know, you, you, about your cars parked here, and things getting flooded, and I'm not at all sure how scientifically it would, it would make a difference. It would make, is if you made that impervious land, we couldn't absorb water either. You know, so I, 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 I would, I would think the smartest thing that we could do is say, no, you can't do that. Uh, let, let, let's, let's become natural, like it's supposed to be.
It just blows me away that they can, they can fill it in.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not supposed to be filled in. It's, it's, it's a floodplain. That's why it's there.
Charlotte just went through buying it.
They did. That's, they did.
Again, because of this.
That's, that's right.
What's the motion of the board?
Keep the ordinance as it is.
Pardon?
I would make a motion to keep the ordinance as it is and not allow any changes.
So it's deny, it's deny approval of this?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
You got a second?
Okay. All those in favor of denial, raise your right hand.
There we go. Hey, we agreed again.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All righty, any comments?
God's late.
Planning staff have any, planning staff report?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to ask for it. Uh, any thing from the planning staff, Lee?
No, sir.
Bjorn, you think from your end that you need?
I've been, I've been advised that it's too late.
Thank you. That was the right advice to be given, whoever gave it to you. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate y'all being here tonight, and I'm so honored to be so long.
That's the price of being good citizens, huh?
Be safe and stay healthy, everyone.
All right, gentlemen? Is there a question?
You getting, uh?
See you in the morning.
See you, Jim. Yeah, this is like three hours past Jim's bedtime. I may not be in it any other morning.